Thank you and good evening, everybody. It is seven fifty-one P M., Monday, June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education is being livestreamed, as well as recorded for storage and viewing on our district website. The public can participate during hearings and individuals and delegates by signing up for a sheet at the entrance, as well as using audio public speaks via form available on our website. A clear written notice of this meeting of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education has been provided to both townships and village clerks, the Star Ledger, the Newsreel, TapItToSomeNet, and the Village Green. Please rise with the flag of allegiance. Mr. Burnside, please note for the record that Board Member Mouse Mina informed the street to be unable to attend this evening, and with that, can you please call the roll?
Board Member Susan Bergen?
Here.
Board President Thayer Joshua?
Here.
Student Representative Noah Moros?
Here.
Board Member Aaron Siders?
Here.
Board Member Kawi Tullisford?
Here.
Board Member Arun Vaidlamani?
Here.
Board Member Caitlin Whitletter?
Here.
Board Member Courtney Winkfield?
Here.
Board Member Johanna Wright?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to hold this meeting in a hybrid manner. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? That appears to be unanimous, Mr. Burnside. At this time, I think we're now going to move on to our board recognitions with student representative Noah Moros.
Great, thank you. So, we're going to start off with the student recognitions. So, the first one is for the C H S class of two thousand twenty-two. Well wishes and congratulations to the entire class of two thousand twenty-two Columbia High School graduating class. We wish you all the best in the next chapter of your academic and professional journeys. The next one is for Maplewood Middle School. In the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, all S O M C middle schoolers were invited to compete in three math contests: the American Mathematics Contest, eight Math Counts, and Math Olympiad. All three contests are designed to be extremely challenging, even for the best students. Under the guidance of Maplewood Middle School M M S math teacher, Mr. Mark Kessler, eighty-two M M S students participated in at least one of the competitions, with nineteen competing in all three. Of the forty-eight M M S students who participated in A M C eight, Abrath Hoffman, seventh grade, placed in first place and also received the Honorable Certificate for scoring in the top five percent. Owen Schubert in the eighth grade, Henry Spielberg in the sixth grade, and Hunter Egger in the eighth grade tied for second place. Henry Spielberg also received the Certificate of Achievement, awarded to sixth graders who score fifteen or higher out of a maximum of twenty-five. Overall, the top three scores summed to fifty-three out of seventy-five, earning M M S the school certificate of merit for demonstrating outstanding proficiency by scoring above of fifty. The top four finishers, Abram Hoffman, seventh grade, Taylor Barnes, eighth grade, Nathaniel Greenberg, eighth grade, and Hunter Egger, eighth grade, comprised the M M S team for the North Central Jersey Chapter Competition for the Math Counts School Competition. The next eight finishers advanced to the Chapter Levels Individuals. Caitlin Chan, eighth grade, Alice Cohen, eighth grade, Anna Cooper, eighth grade, Kevin Roth Dives, eighth grade, Hayden Hindle, eighth grade, Charlie Nutson, eighth grade, Angelo Lynch, eighth grade, and Henry Spielberg, sixth grade. The Math Olympiad Contest was comprised of five rounds spanning several months, with forty-six M M S students participating in at least one of the rounds. Scores were cumulative with Hunter Egger, eighth grade, receiving the highest individual scorer trophy for first place at M M S. The next one is for South Orange Middle School. During the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, all S O M C middle schools were invited to compete in three math contests: the American Mathematics Contest, Math Counts, and Math Olympiad. All three contests are designed to be extremely challenging, even for the best students. Under the guidance of South Orange Middle School math teacher, Ms. Elizabeth La Puma, a hundred and one S O M students participated in at least one competition, with thirty-four competing in all three. Of the fifty-seven S O M students who participated in the American Mathematics Contest, Noah Trokenheim was sixth grade placed first. Trokenheim also received the Honorable Certificate for scoring in the top five percent and the Certificate of Achievement, awarded to sixth graders who score fifteen or higher out of a maximum of twenty-five. Corinne Arnold Berkovitz, eighth grade, placed second, and Noah Inoke, in eighth grade, and Isabel Archer, in seventh grade, tied for third. The top three scores summed to fifty-three out of seventy-five, earning S O M's Certificate of Merit for demonstrating outstanding proficiency by scoring above of fifty. The Math Counts School Competition drew sixty-one competitors from S O Ms. The top four finishers, Theo Archer from seventh grade, Noah Trokenheim from sixth grade, Isabel Archer from seventh grade, and Corinne Arnold Berkovitz from eighth grade, comprised the S O Ms. team for the North Central New Jersey Chapter Competition. The next eight finishers advanced to the Chapter Levels Individuals. Noah Ankinoke, eighth grade, Parker Howe, seventh grade, Jazzy Lyons, seventh grade, Zane Merryweather, seventh grade, Zanvi Rigati, eighth grade, Caleb Rubenstein, sixth grade, Caroline Shaw, eighth grade, and Gabriel Taro, eighth grade. The Math Olympiad Contest consisted of five rounds spanning several months, with seventy-five S O M students participating in at least one of the rounds. Scores were cumulative with Isabel Archer and Theodore Archer receiving the highest individual scorer trophies by tying for first place at S O Ms. Isabel Archer, Theodore Archer, and Noah Trokenheim won Math Olympiad logo pins for scoring in the top ten percent among fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-one contestants. The next one is for our Achieve Foundation volunteers. Every year, the Achieve Foundation achieves all the exceptional volunteer student tutors who serve district students throughout the academic year. For the two thousand twenty-two school year, the students below were recipients of the following Achieve Awards. Two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Achieve Volunteer Award recipients go to Santos Garnret S O Ms., Gracie Klein M M S., and Harper Anderson in fifth grade. Now, the Dubrow Awards for Outstanding Tutors go to Salus Epstein, Gianna Forrester, Isabel Lahar, Eli Hakim, Lauren Kazdin, Sierra Manian, Maliki Meyer, Susan Pendleton, Holden Reeves, and Maya Romanowski. The Super Senior Awards, which goes to seniors who tutor for more than three years, goes to Emma Booker Dodd, Lila Brissette, Mariana Charon, Zoe Ferguson, Ben Furman, Dylan Gill, E C O McGrann, Jackson Condeck, Emily Lopez, Sidney Manian, Violet McGowan, Priya Pai, Nina Panzer, Jayden Park, Lucy Perry, Seth Piers, Lila Promiselle, Cassandra Rakovich, Calliope Reeves, Elodie Reeves, Ash Giron Rochette, Kate Rohan, Sarah Schneider, Tyler Steffen, Ryan Thomas, Katie Trasko, Orin Van Allen, Addie Weiner, and Alex Yang. And the distinguished super seniors, who tutor for three-plus years, were also nominated for the Dubrow Award, go to Ava Byrd, Ella Rose Servie, Aiden Cunningham, Brianna Lucas, Courtney Plaza, and Kaia Thiu. The next one goes out to the C H S Model U N Club. On Saturday, May twenty-first, the award-winning Columbia High School Model U N Club hosted its first-ever South Orange Maplewood Model United Nations Conference for students from Maplewood Middle School and South Orange Middle School. The topic to the conference's committee was the Ukrainian humanitarian crisis, which attendees debated and discussed from perspective of various countries. Maplewood Mayor Dean Daffis spoke at the opening ceremonies to the attendees about various topics, including the Electoral College, the Supreme Court, Israel as mayor, and S O student Blake Gordon won the Best Position Paper Award, and S O student Teagan Feynman won the Best Delegate Award. Our last student recognition goes to South Mountain Elementary School fourth grader, Snow Fox. Congratulations to South Mountain Elementary School fourth grader, Snow Fox, who was chosen as the winner in the Essex County Clerks My Essex County Poster Contest. A ceremony to honor the winners in the lobby of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Justice Building in Newark, New Jersey, was held on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Essex County Clerk Christopher J. Durkin presented an award to each student. Now, on to our staff recognitions. The first one goes to our two thousand twenty-two S O M C staff retirees. On Monday, June ninth, the district celebrated their retirement of sixteen employees, who have a combined year of service that totals three hundred and thirty-point-four years. We sincerely thank every teacher and staff for the commitment and years of service to our district. Most of all, we wish them all the best in the next phase of their life journey. Once again, thank you for your years of service, and congratulations to Sheila Bellini, Susan Betcher, Kathleen Bohm, McCara Brown, Nettie Davis, Deborah De Lorenzo, Susan Donaletti, Carla Dos Santos, Jonathan Fisher, Donna Graham, Lori Hirsch, Renee Joyce, George Marudsen, Renee Pierre Lewis, Veronica Simmons, and Ingrid Williams. Our next one goes to our district staff. Congratulations to S O M C teachers, Maureen Davenport, Seth Boyden kindergarten teacher, Susan Froich, Clinton School fourth grade teacher, Philip McCormick, C H S, C S T social worker, and Lip and Mang, C H S Chinese teacher, who all recently completed the M A E D S program in education, leadership, management, and policy at Seton Hall University. Our next one goes out to the Achieve Foundation. The Achieve Foundation of South Orange Maplewood established the Michelle T. Ricky Teaching Fellowship in two thousand and four in memory of the Board of Education President, Shealy Ricky. And since then, the fellowship has provided nearly ninety-three thousand dollars to fund professional development for opportunities to inspire excellence, innovation, and creativity in the classroom and beyond. Ricky Fellows share their learning with their colleagues and maximize the benefit to the district. This spring, Achieve proudly awarded five thousand one hundred and three dollars for Michelle T. Ricky Teaching Fellowships, enabling five faculty members to participate in summer professional development programs. Congratulations to the fall in two thousand twenty-two Ricky Fellows, who deserve special recognition for honing their craft this summer break. Caitlin Dineci, South Orange Middle School Special Education Teacher, will attend a week-long conference on mindfulness in education at the Omega Institute in Rhinebeck, New York. C H S Guidance Counselor Krista Handler will complete college advising program coursework through Teachers College at Columbia University. Tuscan Librarian and Media Specialist Amy Pop will attend the American Library Association Annual Conference in Washington, D.C. from June twenty-third to twenty-eighth. Matthew Rice, C H S Science Teacher, receives funding to participate in training the trainer course through the Transgender Institute. And lastly, Lana Riz, Math Recovery Specialist at Seth Boyden School, will take the Add Plus Vantage M R Course Two offered by the U.S. Math Recovery Council. And that is it for our student and staff recognitions.
Thank you, Senator Representative Noah Moros. I would now like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May ninth reorganizational meeting and the May sixteenth executive session and regular meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? That appears to be unanimous, Mr. Burnside. And now, let's turn over to Dr. Taylor for his superintendent's update.
Thank you to our board president. And Noah, every time that you read those recognitions, it makes me extra proud, because when I arrived, the board was trying to decide who should read those. And we discussed it, and it was an awesome time for student voice. You make me proud every time you do that. Thank you for continuing that tradition. I'll be very brief with my comments. I know that we have important business to get to. I just want to acknowledge all the work that was done this school year by our teachers, our administrators, central office folks, support staff members, our students, and our parents. As I was having our, hosting our district admin team, we have a full district admin team meeting multiple times per year, falls on the quarters, and we were just reflecting on this time last year. And the journey back to full-day, in-person instruction and thinking about how we were giving updates on how we were going to do outdoor lunch, just the simplest of operational mandates for us. And so many people in our district worked together to make that come to fruition for our kids and for our community. And all of the different quarantines and different pieces that we had to pull together, our data dashboard that shares information around the impact of COVID on our school district, just so many challenges and obstacles that we were able to meet together. I just want to just publicly acknowledge all the folks in our district who just did so much to help us meet that challenge. And lastly, I want to acknowledge the students of Columbia High School, S O Ms., and M M S. for their fantastic moving-up ceremonies and graduations that occurred on Friday. I was able to attend all three, and it's just so heartwarming to see students as they hit those transitional milestones and their families come together to celebrate them and their teachers and their administrators, who all pulled with them towards such a grand accomplishment and culminating activity. And lastly, I want to acknowledge the C H S administrators, who rethought the prom this year. Previous years have had challenges around the prom, and it was a very innovative approach with the red carpet ceremony in the front of C H S, along with the transportation to the site, that really alleviated any of those previous concerns. So, thank you to Mr. Sanchez and his team for that. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Before I go to my report, let me, I neglected to read the board president's statement, so let me do that now. The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the board takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before matters placed on the agenda at a public meeting, administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent. If the superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the board, is referred to the appropriate board committee. Members of the board's committees work with administration and superintendent to ensure members fully understand the matter, and after the committee discusses the matter, is then shared with other board members for consideration. Only then is it placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting. And now, I'll transition to the president's report. All right, so this evening, the Board of Education will be voting to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the board and ASCA. At this time, I would, I don't see anyone from ASCA on, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move up Resolution four-three-one-six. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders. All in favor? That appears to be unanimous, Mr. Burnside. Any comments on Resolution four-three-one-six? Seeing none of closed discussion, Mr. Burnside, please call the roll on Resolution four-three-one-six. And before you do, I'd like to just read it into the record. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of agreement for successor contract between the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education and the Association of Supervisors, Coordinators, and Administrators be approved as per the agreement. Can you please call the roll?
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Tullisford?
Yes.
Board Member Vaidlamani?
Yes.
Board Member Winkfield?
Yes.
Board Member Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wright?
Yes. Oh, my God, this thing is stuck. Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to the board's negotiations team and member of ASCA's leadership team for working together to achieve a deal in good faith. This year, the board was invited. Members of the board attended the C H S Hall of Fame Ceremony, C H S Senior Recognition Night, lavender graduation, and of course, C H S commencement. It was wonderful to celebrate the various successes of all of our students, and we wish you the best as newly-mitted Columbia High School alumni. And as I mentioned in my very brief remarks on Friday, please don't be a stranger. Come back and visit. The Board of Education will be holding two summer retreats, July twenty, Thursday, July twenty-first. We will be discussing board goals for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year, as well as reviewing the results of the upcoming board self-evaluation. And on Monday, August first, the board will be discussing district goal-setting with the superintendent, and our N J S B A field service representative will be assisting us in both retreats. And lastly, I wanted to bring another update on the Jefferson renaming. At our last meeting, we revealed the five names. At our, at our June twentieth special meeting, we revealed the five recommendations from the Jefferson School community on a new name for the school. And at this time, I wanted to open up the floor to discussion amongst my board colleagues on how we want to move forward with these recommendations. Board Member Winkfield?
Since our last meeting, when we discussed the Jefferson renaming, we've received a lot of correspondence, in particular from members of the Jefferson community, including the P T A, urging us to make a decisive decision via, using our authority to vote. And I think that we really need to honor what the current Jefferson community is saying to us, and to be able to exercise the right. I really appreciate my colleagues, the spirit behind my colleagues' desire to want to open this up to the community and to make this a more inclusive process. I think that there are a number of potential unintended consequences in going down that road. I think on a technical end, there are a number of unintended consequences around delaying the renaming with respect to state reporting, as well as just sort of physical markers inside of the school community. I think more importantly, in a more adaptive way, delaying the renaming or sort of opening it up, I think potentially exposes the community to really needless attention that could pose a potential security risk. So, I feel strongly, based on the feedback in particular from the community itself, that we need to move forward before the close of the month and make a decision.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board Member Whitletter?
Thank you. I personally believe that we should open the vote to the community. At the very least, we should open the vote to our students district-wide, as many of them are a product of Jefferson and a contributing member towards its legacy. Ultimately, the board will have a final say in the decision, but in my opinion, the board should follow the process as adopted in the resolution, which states that a new name for Jefferson Elementary School to be selected with the involvement of Jefferson Elementary School students and the district's student community at large. The Board of Education directs the superintendent or a designated to work with the students of Jefferson Elementary School to seek input from the district's student community to propose a new name for that school to the Board of Education by June thirtieth of this year. So, if the board may vote on the adoption of such name to take effect commencing in the upcoming school year. By the time this decision reached the board, which we know happened last week, the district's students should have already been given an opportunity to weigh in on the decision. If the board chooses not to open this to the community at large, I propose we include all district students in the voting process and consider expanding to our C H S alumni. There's no rush to do this, and it's important that it's done fair and not fast.
Thank you. Board Member Wright?
Wow, that was a mouthful, and you basically said everything that I wanted to say, other than, the bottom line is that we're all a part of this Jefferson community, and I think that everyone should absolutely be involved if we are going to rename the Jefferson School. I am not for a handful of people making such a monumental decision in our district. And for all transparency and the things that we need to do, we certainly deserve, as taxpayers, to be a part of this entire process.
Thank you. Board Member Siders, and then Board Member Bergen?
Hi. The Jefferson student population put a lot of work into this, and I feel that we, as a board, owe it to them to make this decision and make this decision relatively quickly. I find it to be disingenuous that we ask these students to do this work, a wonderful civic opportunity, and now we're saying, we're going to pass the buck. I am in support of us making a decision to move forward.
Thank you. Board Member Bergen?
Thank you. For the reasons that I stated last week and the reasons that Board Member Siders and Winkfield already stated, I support the board making a decision as soon as possible, based on the fabulous recommendations and process that we had at the Jefferson School community. And I also just want to say that, you know, there's very few things that are solely within the purview of a Board of Education. We set the district policy, we hire and supervise the, evaluate the superintendent, and we actually can name schools, and I think that this is something that it truly is our job to do, and we need to do it and take, take the leadership role that we have in making that decision quickly, as we've been asked to do by several members of the Jefferson P T A and the president's council.
Thank you, Board Member Bergen. I'll come to in one second. Board Member Whitletter, I just wanted to ask a question for Dr. Taylor. Can you just give us, and I guess Mr. Burnside may be able to chime in as well, from, I guess, technology, operational, and facility standpoint, how much leeway do you need to get? You know, I know you said there were some statewide things that you needed to do. Obviously, there would be district website updates and signage, et cetera. This will kind of, how much time, or getting, as you would say, backward mapping, when would you need to know to have it ready by the first day of school?
So, I guess in looking at day one, students entering the building, having every, you know, really significant task completed, and understanding that this is the time of year when some of our hardest-working folks can take off, this is the only time that they can take off, and they may not be available, you know, at certain parts of our summer. I would think for us to make that happen successfully, it would be mid-July at the latest. Mid-July, because that would give us enough leeway time with all the, you know, backup and supply chains that we deal with for some of the physical pieces, but also understanding that some of our tasks are literally only done by one employee. And so, we're working around not just that person's schedule, but prioritizing all the other things that are a big part of our summer transition to a new school year. Mr. Burnside, anything else to share?
You nailed it when you said supply chain issues. Yes. So, as soon as possible.
Thank you. Board Member Whitletter?
I just wanted to clarify that no one's saying that we don't move forward with this. That's not what I heard in the sentiment, but, you know, we're writing resolutions, whether it's this resolution, the moratorium on suspension, the sexual assault task force, we're writing these resolutions that we aren't following the process we're identifying. So, we set up a process for this. District students were supposed to be engaged, not just at Jefferson, but district-wide, to make this decision. That was supposed to have been brought to the board. We set up this process, we communicated the process, the board last year voted on this process. So, I'm asking that we uphold and follow that process.
Board Member Wright?
Wow, that's absolutely correct. Again, what, you know, the people say hurry, but don't rush, and we seem to like to rush and push things through without thought and without inclusion and without transparency. We need to understand that we represent a lot of people, not just a few, and we're acting as if we're only representing a few, and that's the bottom line. We have an entire community who obviously has a stake in the naming of any school or any project, and it shouldn't be left to a few. And as Ms. Winkletters just stated, that that wasn't the original agreement. But, you know, you basically do what you want to do anyway.
Thank you. Student Representative Noah Moros?
Just the way that I see it and from what I've been hearing, right? The members of our community at large, whether that be walking by, driving by, hearing news about Jefferson, and our students that walk into the building every single day, would be the most impacted by the decision. So, it may take, from what I'm hearing at least, more logistical time to do it, but you're taking that time that would be used, instead of going ahead with it, to sample the community that will be impacted for a long time, hopefully, by this decision. So, in my opinion, it's worth it, rather than having that logistical time to just shove it through. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you for that. Guest, Dr. Taylor, and then I'll come back to Board Member Winkfield.
I was going to just chime in on what board VP, Winkfield noted. I think that there might be a difference in the interpretation of the last, oh, I called you, I said W's. Ah, it's the first time I've ever done it. I prob, I apologize. Oh, gosh. Well, so just still in my thunder here, when I read that last paragraph, input from the district's student community, I don't interpret that as being the seven thousand students. I interpret that as being, interpret- The 7,000 students. I interpret that as being an interpretation of the students of Jefferson. Who are a part of the district's student community. Just wanted to just point that out as. It's semantics, but it does make a difference in your interpretation. Just wanted to share that. And I apologize again.
Board member, thank you for that. Dr. Taylor. Board member Winkfield.
I just want to go back and challenge the characterization that board member Wright. Shared around the way that this process is sort of being carried out without thought and rushed. The Jefferson community engaged in an incredibly thoughtful. Deliberate and intentional process to not only ensure that students. Really had an opportunity to dive into a culturally historical exploration of. In particular, several candidates who were unknown sort of contributors from our own community as alum. But also ensuring that there was a really intentional strategic process to make sure that all students had a touch point in this process. And so I think it's really important as a board that we honor the work that the Jefferson community did. That we honor the process that they chose to carry out as one that was really, really thoughtful and intentional. And I think it's important that we take that work and we act on it with haste.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to table discussion on the renaming of Jefferson. Pending a broader discussion and input from the community. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board member Wright. Mr. Burnside, please call the role on the motion to table discussion on Jefferson renaming. Pending further input from a broader swath of the South Orange Mayfair community.
Board member Wright?
Yes.
Board member Whitletter?
Yes.
Board member Winkfield?
No.
Board member Vodlamani?
No.
Board member Telesford?
Yes.
Board member Siders?
No.
Board president Joshua?
No.
Board member Bergen?
No.
Motion did not pass.
All right. Thank you for that. Board Secretary Burnside. All right. So at this time. I'd like to open it up again, or I can use the randomizer if necessary. And ask for board members' first and second choices based off the list that was presented to us into the community at last Monday's meeting. I'll break out the randomizer. Just give me a second. Board member Siders?
Hello. There were five choices presented to us, plus the name legacy. All choices were, I thought they were all excellent choices. But what was more meaningful for me was for it to be a graduate of our school district. So I removed Ruth Bader Ginsburg from the list. And who I have as my first choice was is Justice Amalia Lyle Kears. Only African American woman in our law school at University of Michigan, CHS class of 1955. And who I had as my second choice is Erna Schneider Hoover. CHS class of 1944. And a woman who had one of the first software patents back in 1971. I thought both of these women had amazing accomplishments. And that it would be an honor for their name to be on the school building.
Thank you. Board member Whitletter?
Our Jefferson students made two final selections for consideration by the board in the renaming of Jefferson. Both candidates embodied their vision of legacy or new legacy. The first being a candidate who was not a CHS graduate, and this was Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And the second candidate being a CHS alumni, Erna Schneider Hoover. As a sign of appreciation for all of the hard work that these students, teachers and administrators put into the renaming project. I will use one of my votes to reflect their wishes. And for that selection, I have chosen Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who was their first candidate choice. That was made by the Jefferson students. For the second candidate, who was part of the Jefferson students honorable mention list. I select Amalia Kears. Both of these women were trailblazers in their own right and set the stage for so many others to follow in their footsteps.
Thank you. Board member Winkfield.
For reasons that I shared in a prior board meeting, my first choice would be Winnie Delia Bolden. Class of 1912 and the first African American woman to graduate from Columbia. And for reasons that my fellow board members have already shared tonight, my second choice would be Amalia Lyle Curse. Class of 1955.
Thank you. Board member Vodlamani?
I do agree with the premise that we should pick somebody who is a graduate of our school. And the reason why I would actually pick somebody ahead of Ms. Curse is because. We shouldn't always look only at achievements and pick the best person there. Sometimes people who have not maybe achieved but have represented are as important. And that's why I believe we should pick Ms. Bolden, the first African American woman to graduate in 1912. And as somebody pointed out in the last meeting, and this was like 50 years after the Civil War. So this is 60 years after the Civil War and 50 years before Brown versus Board of Education. So it is very momentous in terms of historical mark. So my first choice is Ms. Bolden, and my second choice would be Ms. Curse.
Thank you. Board member Telesford?
I agree with sentiments of other board members in that we should pick someone that graduated from our district. And that's why like my first choice is Winnie Delia Bolden, and my second choice is Amalia Lyle Kears.
Thank you. Board member Wright?
Well, to be honest with you, I didn't give it too much thought because I thought there may be some other things coming in. So if you can get back to me, I'll really have to think about this. And may I also add. Maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but was it that the Jefferson students chose two people? Where did the other names come from?
They presented us with five. They, I guess they sort of, actually, let me turn this to Dr. Taylor to make sure that I don't screw it up, mess it up.
Sure. So we engaged the students via the principal and her leadership team. And so we want to make sure that all voices were heard. So as we shared with the policy committee. The students had their first two candidates, and they also had other notable CHS alums. And so. That's what was shared. And also the name legacy or new legacy elementary school within. With a breakdown of what the acronym legacy stood for was also shared. The, so far, we've heard three of the, one, two, three of the names of the five finalists. The names that you have not heard yet. Are Joetta, Clark, Diggs. Yes. Okay. Yep. Who was, who I think is the fifth person, right? Yep, yep. And she's, and you know who she is, I believe, Ms. Wright, four-time Olympian, et cetera.
Board member Bergen?
Thank you. For the reasons that I stated last week, my first choice is Winnie Delia Bolden, and my second choice is Judge Kurt Kears.
Student representative Noah Moros, want to chime in?
I was absent at the last meeting. I believe Vanessa was here, so maybe Vanessa will be more suited for that.
Alternative rep Vanessa Prevalon?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
My first choice would be Ms. Kears, and then my second choice would be Ms. Bolden. Out of all five options.
Thank you for that. I did, I did state my first choice last week was. Was Judge Curse, and my second choice would be for lots of reasons you've heard from some of my other colleagues, would be Winnie Delia Bolden. Board member Wright?
I'm still thinking about the children. If we're talking about the children and. Them choosing who should be voted on. I'm still not clear where the other three names came from.
They came from the student community. It was presented to, they were presented, we were presented with five names, so we have five names to choose from.
Did they have a top, they evidently had a top two or it was a top five?
Dr. Taylor?
So the five we have shared, are there top five? The candidate that was ranked number one by the students was the late Judge Ruth Bader Ginsburg. The number two candidate was Erna Schneider Hoover, CHS alumni, class of 1944. The other three were also mentioned, as were the candidates as well. And again, we, the students are clear that this is a, this is a board decision, right? And that their voices have been heard and the board has to do their work. So they gave us their top five, and the next step is whatever the board determines that it is.
I'll come back to you in one second, Board member, but I just want to get. Board member Wright to weigh in.
I'm thinking about it. I'm sorry. I didn't expect this to occur.
Board member Wright? Go ahead, Dr. Taylor.
I'm going to share, if it's helpful to you, I believe in your Friday packet two Fridays ago. We shared this entire presentation, if you'd like to review it while the board is still deliberating.
It's not, it's not a question of reviewing it. It's a question of making a really, really good and real thought out decision. There have been a lot of things that have been going on since we received this. The last thing I expected was to come into a board meeting tonight and to have to make a rushed decision. On the renaming of Jefferson, like the students, we, you know, you know, you need that time. They've had that time. I think I need that too. Everyone else knew that this was happening, going to happen tonight. I did not.
Board member, before I go, I'm going to come back to him in one second. I just want to read. The email that I sent to the entire board Saturday, January, June 25th at 9:14 a.m. In part, it reads, please come to, in part it reads that the president's report will include a discussion on the Jefferson renaming. Please come prepared to read, please come prepared to address, number one, whether we should open up the vote to the broader community. Number two, your first two choices for renaming amongst the five presented to us by the Jefferson School Community. Board member, what letter?
Never, never in a million years that I think we'd be rushing through this.
Yeah. Board member, what letter?
I guess one of the questions I have, and it's something that. It did bother me that when we had, so I got to sit in the policy meeting and hear directly from the principal and teachers. About all of the work. I mean, it was a really wonderful presentation and included videos and showed. You saw pictures of students that, you know, were getting information from our CHS Hall of Fame to really dive deep and do this work to make. An informed decision and informed choice. So when we got this presentation from Jefferson. It showed that there were two candidates who were selected. Candidate one, who they chose because they weren't in CHS, and then they chose a second candidate because they were a CHS grad. The presentation that we received at the board table was different. It was a misrepresentation in my mind of the work that those students did. Because now we saw five slides where it opened it up to five candidate choices. And I think we have to ask ourselves, is this decision something that students are making? Or is this something that it feels like the board really wants to make? And so I wish that we just had a transparent process where we showed the work that our students did and showed that they had made those final two decisions. That there were honorable mentions, right? And really wonderful people who have contributed so much here and in society and to our history. But that as a board, we just said, look, you, the students made these two decisions. And we want to expand and include these other five. What we saw from the slides were doctored slides that weren't the actual work of the students, which was the point of the presentation. So that's something that I've been having difficulty reconciling because if we're going to sit here and talk about this is the students' wish. And that we asked the students to do this really hard work, then let's portray their work as they did it. Give them the benefit of that. And then as a board say, thank you for those recommendations, we would like to expand and include all five in the decision process. But that didn't happen. And so when we talk about being disingenuous, that process felt very disingenuous to me.
Board member Bergen. Thank you for that. Board member, what letter? Board member Bergen?
Hi, I was at the policy committee meeting where the presentation was given by the Jefferson team. And I just want to say all five of those names were in that presentation. The board got the full presentation. A subset of that was presented publicly for, in order, you know, there were, there were. In that presentation, there were names and images of students and staff that we couldn't present publicly. And that is why the public presentation was a subset of those slides. But the, the policy committee got five names and the full board got the full presentation that the policy committee got.
Board member Vodlamani?
So, I mean, I think this is a very simple. Issue that we are complicating for reasons I do not understand. Wanting to the public, talking about children's wishes, all that is nice, but at the end of it, we are the board. We've been elect, I've said this before, I'm saying this again. We have been elected to make tough choices. Sometimes those choices are not what we wish they were, but they are choices we have to make regardless. So at some point, we need to sit down and say, let's make the choice and vote on it. And to be practical and to be efficient in making the business happen in our district, we also need to do it speedily. We can't have a five-year plan for every issue that is, nor can we have a referendum on every issue.
Thank you for that. I just liked the opportunity to respond. What was made clear to me from the chair of the policy committee is that all five candidates were presented. And we were being presented all five. And so if we're going to be presented all five to avoid any confusion, and particularly as we're going into public, as for us in general. I gave them all numbers so people could remember which number they were talking about in the case of a situation where you forgot the name. As happened, as may have happened, whether it's in the community or here at the board. So I don't believe that it was disingenuous, as you say, to. Edit the presentation. Presentation needed to be edited for reasons that we've heard already regarding some of the slides, some of the information. We've also discussed some things in executive session regarding some aspects of the presentation and the work that went into it. And things that we cannot discuss here, which for further reasons why a lot of the information that was presented to the board. Will stay with the board and not be presented to the full community. So I just wanted to acknowledge that my understanding is that we were presented with five candidates. And so I numbered five candidates. If we were only being presented two candidates, I would have numbered two candidates, but we were presented with five. Board member, board member Wright, and then I'll come back to board member Whitletter.
Yes, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you for that. Board member Whitletter?
So in the presentation, and I, in the presentation, all candidates were listed, but there were two candidates that were the students' choices. And the other ones, there was a title slide that said other notable candidates, or, you know, you have it up, I can pull it up too. And it listed. And it listed those other individuals. So all I ask is that when we present the students' work, that we reflect the work that they did. And when we show a slide that says candidate one, candidate two, candidate three, candidate four, candidate five. In fact, I was confused. I looked to Erin and I said, are we choosing all of these? Cause it was different than the communication we received in policy, which showed the two candidates. And then the others who were for notable mention. And last but not least, and it goes back to process. We had a resolution. We said district students would be involved. We would be seeking the district student input. When we don't reflect that input accurately, it's not, it doesn't make, it doesn't behoove any of us to then sit here and make a decision if we're not following the process that we set in place through this resolution that was decided by other members of this board. So I'm just asking going forward that we reflect the work of our students in a factual way.
And I'll just reiterate, I numbered the five candidates because we were presented with five candidates. Board member Wingfield?
Yeah, I mean, not to split here because I wasn't in the policy meeting, but I have the, the presentation that was shared with us, the full board and public, and it very clearly states final decisions, candidate one, candidate two, and then other notable CHS alumni. So that distinction is clearly made. So I don't think that there was any inconsistencies in the representation of that. And I think as a board, you know, we're within our full right to consider all of those candidates, not just the two that the Jefferson students recommended as their top two.
Uh, yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think the, what Board Member, what letter is pointing out is that, that candidates three, four, and five were numbered in the public presentation and not in the presentation that the board received. And again, I've just reiterated that because it was in the public to make it easier for discussion, which candidates people wanted to talk about. I gave them all numbers. And again, because we were presented with five names, if we had not been presented with, we'd only presented with the top two, or we've only numbered two, but we were presented five. So I think it would have been more disingenuous to not include the other three, even though they had been presented to us. Board member Valamani?
I don't think we're limited to these five. We are, we can decide on any name, including leaving the name as is. I mean, we, at the end of it, we are the ones who are deciding. So this is a recommendation from the students. We respect their recommendation. So we're picking two of the five. I think that's a very legitimate way of looking at this. Now, there's nothing stopping this, right? Or I mean, sorry, any board member, no need to take names from coming up with two names of their choice. That's perfectly okay. There is, yes, I mean, is the work done by, we acknowledge the hard work done by the middle school kids. But that's not binding us from deciding on anything. I just want to clarify that.
Board member Wright, and then Board member, what letter?
This thing is so stuck. I'm so glad to hear you say that, Mr. Valamani, because I've heard from citizens about names that they would like to have considered or put in the box for the rename of a Jefferson, including a couple of male names. But, you know, I just think that things should be open. I'm abstaining because I, I, I just, you know, I'm just not prepared to make a decision as big as this after a week or so. And so you're right, we don't have to change the name of the school. We can leave the school's name the way it is. And I applaud the students from Jefferson School coming up with their two choices. They did an excellent job, but others should be afforded that same opportunity as was stated earlier. But we're here now.
Thank you. Board member, what letter? I saw your hand. Are you still, is it, okay. All right, based on, oh, Board member Bergen?
I was just starting to tally things up and it looks like we have four, four voting board members who said Winnie Delia Bolden was their first choice. Six board, voting board members who said Judge Kears was their second choice and one who said Judge Kears was their first choice. So it seems like if we were to narrow it down to two, that would, those would be the two.
Thank you for that. As I'm looking at, I, I took notes as well. What I have is, I have four, four people picked Ms. Bolden as their first choice, three picked Ms. Curse as their first choice. And everyone who offered an opinion had Justice Curse as one of their top two. So that's what I have based on the notes. Looks like our board secretary is vigorously nodding for those who are virtual in agreement with what I have down here. So, Dr. Taylor?
The way that I tallied, I just gave a point for each time a person was nominated and in the order that I have them, Kears received eight, Bolden received six, and they were by far the top two.
All right. Thank you. And I, just to, as I just want to reiterate, I've heard, I did hear Justice Curse's name from everyone who spoke this evening. So Ms. Butler, am I allowed to, what can I say? Can I say, we, I know we don't have a resolution tonight, but is there a way to say we could, we'll have, I can say we'll have a resolution Wednesday?
Excuse me.
Yes, you can say, you know, this is the result tonight and the board will have a resolution for adoption on Wednesday night.
Board member Valamani?
Can you just clarify the, how you came up with the vote? I mean, so who's number one? Who's number two? Is it a tie? I mean?
Every, so everyone, the way I, I did it, everyone who spoke had Ms. Curse as their top two. I was the only one who appeared, if you will, on every ballot. So that's, you know, his voting system, you know, we wanted to wait it, however we want to do it. I don't know. But every, what I did hear is that every person who spoke said Ms. Curse. Uh, Justice Curse. So, would there be any objection?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I didn't realize we were doing a rank choice.
No, we're not doing anything tonight. I'm just.
No, no, no. I didn't realize we were doing rank choice, picking between both of them. So, so I, I guess maybe I'm confused. I mean, who, who is, what, what is the winner?
How, I guess.
Decide tonight, we may decide two weeks from now.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question. How do you want to define a winner? Because like I said.
Most number of people who got number one.
So four people have Ms. Bolden as number one, three have Ms. Curse as number one, one had Justice Ginsburg as number one.
So Ms. Bolden wins.
Five people have Ms. Curse as number two. Uh, two have Ms. Bolden as number two, and there was one vote for Ms. Hoover as number two. So.
If you're going by just, if you're not doing rank choice, then Ms. Bolden wins.
All right. Let's, Dr. Taylor?
Sure. So regarding process moving forward, my recommendation would be for the board to do this as you've done your officers. So you have a clear top two, but you could also have a blank for a write-in candidate, right? And so when we, when, if this is considered on Wednesday, if there's a, a resolution that's prepared with a blank and you can just take a clear vote on those top two. And if someone wants to have the, anyone can make a recommendation away from that as well, perhaps. Just one thought on the process.
I want to, um, thank you for that. I just want to ask Ms. Butler a question, a process question. If we were to have a resolution, whenever, right? Let's just say it's Wednesday or if it's not. In effect, just saying the board will rename Jefferson Elementary School blank with a blank on the actual resolution. Is that something we could have and then the blank would then theoretically be filled in as at, by our vote?
Yes, that's how you do your election of officers. You don't know before you're walking in who it's going to be. So it's not just an approve or, or reject. You have blanks.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Board member Bergen?
I just want to clarify because my notes have only Board President Joshua as listing Judge Kears as the first choice. So I'm not sure how you got three people, three voting people.
I'm sorry, I counted the student reps too.
Or even through, okay, or even, that, then I only got two.
So that's, so let me, I did, Board Member Siders did say Justice Curse was her first choice. So it was Siders and Joshua who said Justice Curse was number one. Oh.
I had her down as Hoover as her first choice.
No, Hoover was her second choice. Okay, so that's a fair point, Dr. Taylor. I, I realized and during the notes that we both took down the student reps vote, but now I'm gonna come to Ms. Butler again. We cannot include the student reps vote in this. Correct? Okay.
Yeah, if, if you removed the student reps vote, those two are still the top two by far.
Right, but then I think it's, it's going to what Board Member Valamani said, right? Four people have Bolden as number one versus two with Curse as the number two, even though Curse appeared on all seven. Four, Curse appeared on all seven. Four of the seven who have voiced an opinion avoided for Bolden. So that would, that probably would be the majority.
Right, so if you're putting both, both folks forward, right? And then, right.
And then you vote next thing.
Next, right, well, Wednesday, whatever. Yeah, yeah.
Is anybody, is everybody comfortable with, you know, coming in, I guess Wednesday with the two names and we'll?
And a quick clarification. I mean, it's not like I have anything against any of the other names. It's just that, you know, I'm getting a little competitive when I'm pushing my candidate forward.
Feels like we're voting for MVP or something. Um, understood. So again, just to reiterate and just clarify that uh, seven board members voiced an opinion. Uh, of the seven board members, four selected Winnie Delia Bolden as their first choice. Two had Amali Alau Curse as their first choice. One had Justice Ginsburg, Justice Ginsburg as their first choice. And then in terms of second, one, two, three, four, five. Five members had Justice Curse as their second choice. One had Ms. Bolden as a second choice and one had Ms. Hoover as their second choice. Okay. Uh, thank you, everybody, for participating in the discussion. That concludes the president's report. I'll now turn it over to Student Representative Vanessa Prevalon, who will be giving us the, the Student Representative Report. And while we bring her up, I do want to just congratulate our student reps for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, Noah Maros and Vanessa Prevalon. Student Rep Prevalon, are you up? We see, we see your screen. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Um, good evening, everyone. Last Friday was graduation for the class of twenty-twenty-two. And this month, Noah and I met Dr. Taylor and we discussed that the pool at Columbia High School will officially become a student center and their additional supports programs during the summer for students. And this month, facilities in our district will undergo construction. Columbia High School students can still access mental health resources by visiting the CHS counseling website. This summer, there is a summer meal program starting from July eleventh through August nineteenth, through Monday through Friday for children under eighteen and adults nineteen and over in private slash public, non-private, nonprofit school program for mentally or physically disabled. Um, in light of recent events of Roe v. Wade being overturned, we must stick together and continue to advocate for things that matter. Thank you. That's all for this month's student report.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now go to, I believe we're, where are we? Committees or public speaks? Yep, all right. We're now at our, we're now at our first public speaks. This is a time for, an opportunity for you to share your concerns about an item on the agenda, but not tied for dialogue with the board. While we wait for Mr. Burnside to bring down the sheet, I'll let you know that the board requests that you state your name and town of your residence for the record. We will set the time limit to three minutes for each speaker and we ask that you respect that time limit. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we're giving anyone an advantage to share their views over another individual. Speakers have full protection of free speech during public speaks. However, this forum does not protect you from the subject of your free speech pursuant liable or assigned to charges. And finally, the board recommends that all members of our community pursue the chain of command. Sorry about that. All right, um, I'm gonna need help with this first name here. Is it Brian? Bill, Bill, I'm sorry, Bill. Bill Powell? Sure, we can do that. Our next public speaks is from Wendy Blaney. Let's pull up a chair for Ms. Blaney, please. And there's a button there that looks like a voice. You hit that and the mic will be on.
So I'm Wendy Blaney and I live in South Orange. So my name is Wendy Blaney. I have one child currently in the district at Columbia High School and I have two that have graduated in twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen. Our district always seemed to start and end a bit later than our neighbors. But the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar seems exceptional. The late start and backloading of days in June is just not constructive. We're giving up important instructional days in the beginning of the year for unattended days in June. As my three-day crusade to collect over two hundred and fifty signatures occurred, I received endless private messages from parents who have children missing their own graduations, having to choose between going to camp on time or going to graduations, parties, midnight madness and other celebrations, missing college orientations in person and having to go online, online after everything we've been through. And missing out on employment opportunities because they start mid-June. There must be a better way and we need to do right by our students. The administration must understand what a difference even one day makes to these students. We know there's construction occurring in the buildings and this ask results in a change of planning, but equally, there are some superfluous days that we can certainly get back in order to shorten the year. The letter we circulated outlines several different options and I'm not going to reiterate them. I am appealing to everyone to rethink the way the calendar has been laid out. I received responses from board members who told me they don't write the calendar, they approve it. From the union who says they have no say in graduation dates. So Dr. Taylor, this leads me to you and to the administration. I read your responses and it really doesn't make sense to me. While I agree we all want to minimize changes, we are asking for you to do something today that will make a change that will literally happen twelve months from today. When the administration presents the calendar, the board must ask the tough questions of how this calendar serves or hurts our children. And I have outlined the many ways it hurts our children. Now is the time for the board and the administration to do something about it. It's my understanding that according to prior negotiations, we absolutely can bring staff back prior to Labor Day and a four-day holiday for Labor Day is not a requirement. Additionally, I bet if you compare attendance numbers at the high school specifically from June thirteenth on against previous November election week numbers, we have far greater attendance in November. Today, camp buses came down my street, internships started, weekend clappins for camps were posted all over Facebook. What a shame. South Orange Maplewood School District will still be in session today in twenty twenty-three. We need to come up with a solution that does not hold our graduates hostage until May, March, Monday, the twenty-sixth. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next public speaks is from James Nathanson.
What does this turn on? Has that turned on?
Yeah, it is. Uh, good evening. James Nathanson, thirty-three, Duran Road in Maplewood. I come before you one last time this evening regarding the renaming of Jefferson School. I've expressed my dissenting views in writing and in person several times previously, both publicly and privately, so I need not repeat them here. I will simply say that you've been derelict in your duty to honestly and forthrightly address the substantive questions, issues and alternatives that I initially raised in my memo to you dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Your duty was not to me, but to the public at large and most. Your duty was not to me, but to the public at large and most importantly, to the students of this district. Your duty as public servants was to approach the issue in depth with balance, historical accuracy and transparency. You have failed in that duty. Your resolution of August 16th, 2021 to rename the school was passed unanimously, buried in a bulk vote with a batch of other actions without a single minute of debate. Your meeting a month later, a month earlier in July 2021 focused on board process on this issue without a single minute of substantive discussion on the merits of the case. Furthermore, four members of this current board, 45%, did not vote on the renaming resolution. Ms. Whitletter, Mr. Talisford and Mr. Valamani, as they were not elected at the time, and Ms. Malaspina, who was not present. To each of you, I say, do not equivocate. The public deserves to hear your individual voice on the fundamental first question of whether you agree that Jefferson School should be renamed. I appear to be a lone voice in this discussion as my objections have garnered little public support. That is unfortunate and I had hoped it would be otherwise. So you may assume that your action reflects the will of your constituents. On the other hand, they may be unaware of it or unwilling to speak up. I have no specific brief with the five women put forth as candidates for a replacement name. If you were charged with naming a new school, you might find one or more of them credible. That said, as you consider your criterion acronym legacy, not one of them comes close to measuring up to Thomas Jefferson in terms of lasting impact on the course of American and human history. You can try with this misguided action to dishonor him, but you cannot erase his legacy, notwithstanding his personal failures. His legacy, his Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, will continue to shine brightly in our nation and in our world, if not in Maplewood and South Orange. Should you choose to proceed with this shameful episode, it undoubtedly will serve as a message and a warning to neighboring communities and far beyond. It's not too late to reverse course and I urge you to do so.
Thank you. Our next public speaks is from David Hummer.
David Hummer, 26 Nelson Place, Maplewood. And to each and every one of you serving on the board, thank you for your service to our community. Speaking about two particular issues regarding the renaming of Jefferson School, whether there should be a public referendum on the new name of some sort and how to communicate the history of the school as Jefferson School and the legacy of Thomas Jefferson. And I beg your indulgence, I'm gonna offer some specific suggestions based on tonight's comment. On the public vote, the expressed desire of some of you to have a preferential public referendum on the new name for the school as a credit to your small d impulses and a worthy natural instinct. Nevertheless, don't do it. Please decide this on your own and don't have a public vote. I have three reasons. One, you have a good process. It's an efficient process. That's good on a fraught emotional issue. You have a lot on your plate. Why would you voluntarily burden yourself with managing the community preferences and the expectations that resolve? You have more important work. Second, this is your decision. You have the authority to do this. You've lost authority over the last 50 years. It's a tragedy, but you have the authority to do this and it's an important manifestation of your policy. So own it. This is why voters put you in office. Third, and I make this comment in light of public actions and public comments that some of you have made that have expressed your dissatisfaction with your interactions as board members. This is a perfect issue to improve the process. I've heard a respectful disagreement tonight. I've heard numerous good points made on people who disagree. Own this. None of you are gonna get what you want necessarily and many of you will be disappointed. That's liberating. Have a good dialogue. On renaming, or rather, on how to commemorate Jefferson School and Thomas Jefferson, one of the things that is lost in the renaming is your ability on an ongoing basis to teach our children a fundamental fact of human nature, which is that human beings are complex and often contradictory. And this is not my authority. I don't get this. This is Annette Gordon Reed. And for those of you who aren't aware, she is the professor of history who discovered after years of effort the DNA evidence that linked Thomas Jefferson to Sally Hemmings. She thinks institutions that are named after Jefferson School have an obligation to teach children this complexity. So you can't do it on an ongoing basis if you rename it, but you can do it on a permanent basis. Here are three specific suggestions. Put a big bronze plaque on a big rock. If you need a model, go to Memorial Park to the north end and look at that. You'll have three or 400 words on that plaque where you can talk about the history of Jefferson School. And what I would recommend to further engage the students, which is worthy, is have an essay contest. Have recognition and prizes by age. Open it to anyone in Maplewood under the age of 21 and the winning entry goes on the plaque. Greatly appreciate, this is a good process. Please keep it going. Do the job you were elected to do and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next public speaks is from Bill Powell.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Taylor, Board President Joshua, ladies and gentlemen of the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education. I believe everyone received a copy of my letter. Is that correct?
Yes, we just can't discuss it because there was some student information in there we're not allowed to share in public.
All right, may I have a response to my, my letter, please?
Dr. Taylor?
So I'm gonna lean on our solicitor. This is a time for folks in our community to share their feelings with us about any number of circumstances. It's not a, as the board president reads in his statement, it's not a time for dialogue with the board. The board is here to listen to whatever you'd like to share. And to Ms. Butler, did I leave anything out?
No, that is accurate.
So when do I get a response to my letter? All right, so we want to go there.
Mr. Powell, thank you. I think, I do believe Dr. Taylor has responded. And again, we have to be very careful with some of the information that was in there.
I'm not gonna give out any information other than the information in my letter concerning a student that will remain nameless in reference to the principal calling the police on, on him in reference to words that he had said to another student. And I have in front of me your, a uniformed state memorandum on agreement between education and law enforcement officials. And in this memorandum, in my opinion, this principal made a, a wrong mistake.
I am, excuse me, sir, I'm gonna remind you that as Board President Joshua mentioned during his introduction, you may make statements, but you need to understand that the individuals about whom you make statements can have a right of action, a cause of action against you with regard to slander or defamation. I am letting you know that.
Now, Flynn, and now I guess I need a lawyer to, to make a presentation at the, at this setting. Is that correct?
No, I am taking the opportunity to remind you.
I think the principal made a mistake in her decision to send the police to someone's house based on a statement that he made to another student. That's all I'm saying. And I said that, and I'm taking opinion, I'm making opinion, that that was a mistake and it went against your own policy and procedures in reference to, this was a nature, and a serious nature, a serious offense. This was not a serious defense, offense, in my opinion. In my opinion, two students made a comment to each other and the police was called. I, my profession allows me to make mental health evaluations, as I've said before, and the police very seldom has been called in reference to a student making a comment about hurting himself or hurting another student. So.
Goff, so we'll pause the time for a minute. Just wanna make sure, get the mic back on so we can hear you. There you go. Yes, sir, please continue.
I think the policy is uniformly improper. That, in other words, every principal does not handle this matter in the way that the principal of Maplewood, Maplewood Middle handled this incident.
We're now talking about individual staff members. I'd like to remind Mr. Powell not to, or I guess reiterate what Ms. Butler said respectfully regarding naming of individuals even in their positions that during public speaks.
I'm not able to say that I think a member that I pay taxes, I pay her salary. I can't make a statement about what, what she, what I think she did was wrong.
You, you can say that and as Board President Joshua and I have both said, that the fact that you have the right to make a public statement does not protect you from any claims by that individual for defamation or slander. That's all we are reminding you of. You have the right to speak. We cannot speak to you about personnel matters, about student matters. The, the preference, however, in all of this is that you utilize the chain of command and apparently you have reached out.
I did utilize the chain of command. I, I wrote a letter to the superintendent. I wrote a letter to the, each one of the board members indicating that. I thought this was a mistake. I thought it was, and again, I thought it was racially motivated also. I indicated that. You don't call the police on, on a student who, who made a comment about, you know, what he was going to do at a particular time when it was just a conversation. It was just a conversation and the police was called. They could have had a mental health evaluation. They didn't have to send the police to the house and et cetera. And I know what this says, but we have a situation here where there was no credible threat.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, your time is up.
There was no credible threat.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, your time is up.
I haven't been here in over 20 years.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, your time is up. As I've stated at the beginning, I cannot, I cannot, I cannot give people preference one way or another. I can't do that.
I don't think so. I'm here because I'm, I'm pretty angry.
Mr. Powell, I understand that, I really do. But, you know, we do have public speaks and we're limited to three minutes at this time. Saying your three minutes are up.
And if I, and if I refuse, if I refuse to leave, what's gonna happen? If I refuse to leave and, and what's gonna happen? What are you gonna do?
Mr. Powell, we do have a second public speaks later on this evening and we can speak at that time as well. You'll have another three minutes. At this time, your three minutes are up. Thank you. We will now transition to our online public speaks. Our first public speaks is from Heather Sazbowski.
I would ask that you turn that microphone off, please? And resume your seat. Good evening. I came here initially to thank you for your action, for providing, or ensuring that the community has provided harm reduction information concerning gun violence and gun deaths. As I believe you're all aware, more youth commit suicide using guns that are killed by homicide. Sorry. This is personal and I think what you're doing is so important. And by amending the resolution to ensure it gets into everyone's hands, makes a difference. When I was 14, a classmate at my religious school found his father's gun. He killed himself and his 17-year-old sister found him. And I have no idea why. All these years later, I am now crying at your board meeting. Did not expect that. I was not close to him. And the fact that it has this lasting impact on mere religious school classmates? His family was so devastated. And they were good, decent people who would never have risked their child's life had they known what the risks were. And by sharing information with people so they can make better decisions, more informed decisions about just being safe with what's in their homes, whether that be locking up medication or unloading and locking up properly firearms, you make a difference when you provide people the tools and information that they need to make good decisions for their families. And I very, very, very much appreciate the fact that you were doing this. Separately, just because of your lengthy conversation earlier, I wanna note, but I'm also very proud of the Jefferson School community, the names that they came up with. When I read their bios, they're incredible. Like these students and faculty and everyone who came up with these, really, they did their homework. I really appreciate it. My son went to Jefferson for pre-K years ago. He was not part of this process, but I very much, you know, feel like we all own it because this is our community and these names are clearly so thoughtfully chosen. I don't think you can go wrong with any of them. And, you know, I appreciate the debate that you had earlier and I absolutely look forward to whomever you choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next online public speaks is from Rachel Fisher.
Hi, am I being heard?
Yes, you are. You have three minutes.
I'm, I'm sorry about the delay. I didn't know how to unmute myself. I'm just here to echo what Heather just said. Heather and I have worked together on gun safety, volunteering and advocacy. And I was very pleased that Candace Davenport spearheaded this idea of having a fact sheet with gun safety information from a public health point of view that would be distributed to all families in the school district. And I do think that by approving this and making sure that every family in the district sees it, you have the opportunity to, to save lives. Like Heather, I have lost a friend to gun violence and I'm sure that's something we share that, that made both of us get involved in this issue. I wanted to share that I just read today that an eight-year-old boy in Florida yesterday accidentally shot and killed a one-year-old girl and injured a two-year-old girl. And this is something we don't even hear about because it happens every single day in America. And I think it's great that our community is trying to at least do what we can to protect ourselves and protect our, our children. So I wanna thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaks is from René Pierre Louis.
Hello? Can you hear?
Hi, good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is René Pierre Louis. I came here before you today as a retiree with 166, 76 days left into a personal day, along with 26 years of service to the South Orange Maplewood School District. This morning, tonight, I had this question that made me very clear to be part of the South Orange Maplewood School District. The discussion to allow even the student of Jefferson to have a voice on certain opinion. Do with the board and to have to discuss. But the only question that I, it is bad for me, how? The question that I have is that why such a courtesy is extended to every part and community of, of the member of the community beside the transportation department? Is it because we are the minorities? Because on May the 21st, I had call out without feeling good. And many of you can empathize with me because most of you work. Someday you wake up, you know, feeling good. I had call and say, I'm not feeling well for this morning. I will be at work in the afternoon. To my great surprise, on my last payday, I paid day what we held for my paycheck. It is unclear to me what was the last time they but had a discussion about changing the policies from three days to one day with the promise of reimbursing you if you go to the doctor, we're gonna reimburse you the copy. I never know such a policy, please. I never know when was a discussion because everything is conditional subject to rules of the bargaining agreement. No wonder I can understand now why we are in a budget before. Because I would like to know when was the board policy changed to such matters? Because a budget schedule mean we have to save money. I wonder why are we paying for transportation coordinator along with that assistant when we don't have the transportation department anymore? The board made a decision to fire all of us at transportation. Knowing where was going on, and I know running transportation for next year is gonna cost three times the amount it costs us to run it this year. The abuse and the overreach is an abuse of power with what is going on and what's happening to us. Every year from my twenty six years, we all do the graduation, we do the athletic, and we do the specialness. This year, each and every one of us were never given that opportunity. Everything was given to earlier. When you're paying twice the amount of money, it would have cost you having us doing it. Why are we giving everything to Jimmy? Why Jimmy giving all the special treatment? I don't know what else I can do. I don't know what else I can do. No wonder that we are in a budget for this. While we are transportation, I've been verbally and financially abused. What else can we do? We filed the committee measure. We followed the changes from it. We complained to the superintendent. We complained to the B D committee. We follow the channel comment. No one care.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre Louis. Your time is up.
Three minutes. You guys looking off to do your due diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre Louis. Your time is up.
Sir, three minutes?
That was three minutes, sir.
Please, I would like to know why the payday what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre Louis. Your time is up.
A discussion on changing the policy on sick days.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre Louis. Your time is up. That concludes our first public speaks. Dr. Taylor, care to respond?
Thank you to our board president. Thank you to all who took some time out of your evening to join us to share um and participate in our public speaks. For those who don't normally attend these meetings, um both the board members, myself, and our leadership team, we take copious notes around um the topics of your public of your public speaks that you share. Um as our board president um shares in his introduction, um I'm not advised to respond to public speaks, but I like to do so and share as much as I can so that everyone can leave with the same information. Um but I cannot comment specifically on students and or staff members because of confidentiality laws that I'm bound by, but I would go through my notes and respond where I can. Thank you for the advocacy and the comments around um your beliefs on the school district calendar. Um we know that that's one of the um most impactful documents that we put forward. As a parent, I I've been bound by school calendars and this is I've always worked in public schools, so I understand how impactful of school calendars are to all of our stakeholders. Um as I shared in my email correspondence um a few times, um we don't take these decisions lightly. And there are lots of um lots of, I would say, impactful uh pieces from our stakeholder groups that we take into consideration. We also take into consideration the historical um the the historical information around our district and our community. Um and for this and the next probably three calendars, we take into consideration the impact of construction. And I know that um we say that in continuous responses, but it is significantly uh impactful when it comes to managing the beginning of the school year. Um and we understand that our graduation date will be a day or two later than it normally is. But building in that cu- cushion allows for us to successfully manage um what is a generational project. It's gonna impact not just the seven thousand students who will be here next year, but generations and generations of them. So we want to make sure that we do it the right way. Um and again, I would just refer back to my previous responses on that topic. Um thank you for the feedback. Um both members of our community who shared feedback around the Jefferson School renaming. Um it is a, as you can see, the board is taking this matter very seriously. Um the students and the staff and leadership of Jefferson um gave such an effort um and just very thoughtful feedback that the board is considering, and I'm proud to be a part of shepherding it in, and your opinions on that process are acknowledged. As I stated, I cannot respond or engage in conversation through email or verbally when it comes to specific students or staff member. It's simply illegal for me to do so, and it makes the board liable um if I do so. So when I acknowledge the receipt of a concerned citizen around a specific staff member or a specific student, and you're not related to that student, there's no way for me to have a conversation um about that. But know that that was acknowledged and it was reviewed. Um thank you for the uh feedback around the board's action this evening um of approving uh the gun violence document that will be in a part of our parental digital backpack in the fall. We had worked with uh Ms. Davenport uh and had adapted that document to be a part of our digital backpack a few months ago. However, with the latest tragedy um that occurred in Texas, we wanted the board to have an opportunity to publicly affirm on the record their support for that work. Um and the last person who left public speaks again regarding personnel and employment, I could not comment on that, but your public speaks is acknowledged. Those are all my responses.
Thank. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. We'll now move to the committee reports. We will start with um board member Bergen, who's on the screen. And then I will go right to left around the horseshoe with board member Siders, Valamali, and then Wakefield.
Thank you. Um the Policy Committee met on June fourteenth for an hour and forty five minutes. Excuse me, board member Whitlitter filled in for board member Malaspina. Tonight, we're voting on three policies, two to adopt and one to abolish. Um sixteen forty eight point one five, record keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings COVID nineteen. This policy addresses record keeping related to employees who test positive for COVID. It's to comply with OSHA and has limited applicability in schools. It applies only to employees working in the school nurse's office and any adjoining clinical areas in the school building. Ninety four hundred news media relations is being updated based on Strauss Esme. It addresses who can speak to the with the media on behalf of the district and the confidentiality obligations of staff speaking publicly as individuals. And ninety four ten broadcast media relations. This policy was adopted was last passed in two thousand and one is being abolished. It is not a Strauss Esme policy and is largely covered by ninety four hundred or could be incorporated into the regulations of ninety four hundred. We have six policies for first read and one with um being proposed to abolish as a first read. The first is twenty four fifteen oh four district wide parent and family engagement. We approved this policy in April twenty twenty two, but Strauss Esme made some additional updates. It is now about family engagement, not only parent engagement. And one of the additions to the policy is that it requires the district to involve parents and guardians of Title Ones of students in Title One schools and decisions about how funding reserved for parent engagement is spent. Twenty four sixteen point oh one, postnatal accommodations for students. This is a new Strauss Esme policy about accommodations for students returning to school after giving birth, addressing breastfeeding and pumping. We currently have a policy on this topic, which is fifty seven fifty two point one student post maternal accommodation. But we will replace it with the um more robust Strauss Esme version. And so that that other fifty seven fifty two point one is being um having a first read for being abolished. Fifty five twelve harassment intimidation and bullying has had a big revision. It has new language about setting standards for behavior cooperatively and creating an atmosphere that encourages students to grow in self discipline. Um pages six to thirteen of the red line have a new section on consequences and appropriate remedial actions um that list a range of consequences and factors to to use in determining appropriate consequences for a HIB. And um there is also new language that the use of negative consequences should occur in conjunction with remediation and not be relied upon as the sole intervention approach. The next two are eighty two ten school year and eighty two twenty school day. These are technical policies about what counts as a school day and the require and the requirements of a school year. They both have been updated by Strauss Esme since the board last adopted them. And F F T added language um to the school year policy that the superintendent shall in consultation with the associations of the district annually prepare and submit to the board a calendar for the next school year um by a certain date. Ninety seven twenty solicitations by vendors is a stress this may policy that addresses vendors soliciting students, parents, and guardians. The vendors must be approved by the board, and the board can withdraw approval at any time. The Policy Committee also discussed several policies that are in the pipeline but are not ready for first read. Twenty four fifteen point five oh Title One um school parent and family engagement um is a new policy it has, but it has some information that needs to be filled in, so it will be brought back for first read um soon. Twenty four seventeen student intervention and referral services. The board revised this last fall, but Strauss Esme updated it. And so we'll bring it for a first read and make sure that the revisions we made last fall are incorporated into the revised policy. Twenty four twenty two comprehensive health and physical education. I worked on revising this policy with board members Telsford and Whitlitter, and it's gonna go back to CNI before it comes to the full board for a first read. Fifty five thirteen care of school property. Um the Policy Committee discussed revisions to fifty five thirteen to align it with the recent resolution on fines, and it will go to CNI before it comes to the board for a first read. Fifty five fourteen student use of vehicles on school property is going to go to F F T. It deals with when students can ride um bikes to school and um parking and that kind of thing. And eighty five fifty unpaid meal charges, outstanding food service charges will also go to F F T and will be um consistent with the resolution on fines that we passed. And uh and that's everything.
Thank you. Uh any questions for board member Bergen? All right, on to board member Siders to CNI. Thank you.
Hello. Uh the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on Tuesday, June seventh. We met from approximately six thirty to maybe eight twenty. Um board members present were Wingfield, Telsford, uh Board President Joshua sitting in for board member Malaspina. We had two presentations. The first was from the District Management Group, D M G. This is an organization that supports districts in creating schedules that focus on best practices and are guided by district school priorities. This organization sends a team of people to learn how to do this work through their institute, and it's over the course of four months and four sessions. They provide support via work sessions and coaching calls. So this organization or the proposal is that this organization will be working with our district to help with scheduling from our K to twelve uh schools. And this work will be P D work where they will help guide the district on how to set scheduling. The next presentation we had was from Mr. Chris Preston, who is the supervisor of social studies. And the proposal is for us to use Newzella, an existing online vendor, as a main resource for our fourth and fifth grade social studies curriculum. And that by using Newzella, the instructional content will be tailored to our needs. For special services, CPAC had a meeting on Thursday, June ninth that was looking ahead to the summer and next year, where parents were invited to discuss with other parents and the CPAC board about wrapping up the school year, looking ahead to the summer and navigating I E Ps and five oh fours for the upcoming school year. The SOMS or S O M S D preschool department held an afternoon kindergarten transition workshop for incoming kindergarten parents. That was on June eighth. The discussion focused on topics such as uh the next phase of school and child development. Uh the middle school inaction nights took place, and that was a big success. And these events give parents and rising sixth grade students an opportunity to experience the middle school and navigate the building in preparation for the upcoming school year. The high school peer luncheon took place. It's for rising ninth graders with I E Ps. They have an opportunity to learn about being a high school student who receives special services and what to expect in the upcoming year. I believe these uh this luncheon is facilitated by existing students with I E Ps. Ms. Robin Quinn, Ms. Kathleen Brown, and Dr. Jane Bean-Folks are currently working on developing the curriculum for writers' workshop, I'm sorry, readers' workshop. The readers' workshop classes were students with I E Ps who have been recommended by their middle school or C H S teachers and the child study team due to struggles in areas of reading comprehension, fluency, and decoding skills. Our access and equity update this month is that the board is being asked to renew a contract with institutional compliance solutions. This is the organization as that has been providing professional learning and support for Title Nine. If approved, the district will be adding two components to the work that is currently being done. One is an on demand video training for students that provides an age appropriate explanation of Title Nine, the pathways for reporting and resolving matters of sexual harassment, and the supportive measures available upon request. Students will learn how to report misconduct as well as what support and procedures follow their requests. The second piece is what is called Diversity Equity and Inclusion University, D E I, which is a self paced online learning platform designed to meet the needs of human resources professionals and others responsible for responding to reports of protected class discrimination outside of Title Nine. I will skip over our policies because uh Policy Chair Bergen was able to review that. The last item are, we have a bunch of approvals for the board tonight. I will just note that one of the approvals is for Farrier Group, which is our Atlas curriculum vendor. Um Mr. Burnside worked with Atlas to lock in a rate for three years. That is, I believe, gonna save the district money, so thank you, Mr. Burnside. Uh we are also engaging in a dual enrollment agreement with Harrisburg University. Most of these courses will be STEM related or electives. And we are also looking to expand our contract with equal opportunity schools for the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for board member Siders? All right. Thank you. Over to board member Valamani for F F T.
We had the F F T meeting on June twenty third, and it was attended by all the board members. Ms. Ms. Wright was uh not present. So the the first thing we spoke about was about the software softball fields. We had a presentation by the architect and the engineer. And the idea is to have Ritzer Field to be to have two softball fields for the varsity as well as the junior varsity teams so that the program as a whole can function really well. So we went into details about what the sizes would be. There would be no changes to the surrounding walkway. The dugouts and beaches would be would be present. There'd be about thirty five feet high netting that is included. There's gonna be lighting. And we went into some of the details. So all in all, it was a very good presentation. It seemed like uh it will be received well by the community. Next, we spoke about transportation. Uh the mo- the most important part there was selling of the buses that we currently have. Since we are outsourcing all our bus routes, we have new buses that other people would want to buy, and we've been offered twenty-five hundred dollars above. Sorry. You want to add the latest information, or are you waiting on that? Okay. That's fine. So anyway, the idea is to sell them out, and there were multiple choices talked about how and what we can do. We spoke about the lease purchase bids and the card system updates, and we have money for Chromebooks. We also have card systems coming in for students, which will be installed only for C H S installed over the summer. We we have resolutions today for contract renewals for plumbing and custodians. We also have change orders that have come in because of contracts or because of changes at the elementary schools. A bunch of board member questions were answered. We had, we spoke about the new hire for Assistant Transportation Director and, you know, how they would be only, you know, that person is required to help out Miss Talmitch, who would be the only person in the department after end of the school district, uh, school year, sorry. We talked about preschool costs and how many pupils were spread across multiple preschools. And we also talked about data privacy and power in Power School and S T Math. We do not use the learning management system for Power School, so there is no issue with, you know, data being spread out. For S T Math does not track learning data. It only tracks marketing data, so it's not that, you know, student data is going to be presumed. For policies and regulations, we did a quick run through policy eight to two zero and eight to one zero. They're both ready for first reads. And for future meets, we're going to be moving to a Wednesday before the board meeting, because the board meeting is moving to the last Thursday of the month. That's pretty much what I have, and.
Thank you. For my question, just want to make one clarification. The board meetings are moving. One thing I just want to note is that the October, November, and December meetings, due to various conferences and holidays, will be the third Thursday, not the fourth Thursday, or last Thursday, I should say.
And also one one last addition, which was not part of the actual F F T meeting, but we we got the opportunity to walk into the C H S, Columbia High School, and take a look at the pool and the gyms and various other facilities in there, and that was very instructive and very helpful and, you know, as we're talking about different options that we have for that whole space.
Thank you, and I know quite a few of you will be taking your tours tomorrow. So thank you to Mr. Burnside, Dr. Taylor, and the team for working to facilitate those. Any questions for Board Member Valamani? All right, thank you. On to Board Member Wingfield for Personnel.
All right. The Personnel Committee met on June sixteenth for approximately two hours, in attendance for myself, Board Members Siders, Whitletter, Wright, as well as S L T members, including Dr. Taylor, Dr. Gilbert, and Ms. Robinson. We discussed a number of items, including this month's personnel resolutions. There was a review of the appointments and separations. We had five retirements, five resignations, and ten leaves of absence. There were a review, excuse me, a review of appointments, salary adjustments, stipends, mentor payments, and summer employment. Those are all up for a vote this evening. In new business, we discussed and reviewed the job description for a new position who will report to Dr. Gilbert. This position is called the Director of Access and Equity. Dr. Gilbert provided a review of the responsibilities for this position. Dr. Taylor added that the goal is to forward the final candidate for recommendation by August fifteenth at the latest. We discussed the hiring process for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. Currently, Ms. Robinson is reviewing applications for this position, and in the coming weeks, Ms. Robinson, Dr. Taylor will develop and share and update the board on the timeline for filling this crucial position. We discussed in general the Title Nine investigation process. Dr. Gilbert shared a Title Nine flow chart that consisted of five levels of support and processing, concluding with a resolution within a twenty-day timeframe. Ms. Wright shared that this summer we'll be celebrating the fifty-year anniversary of Title Nine and suggested that we do something as a district to recognize this important milestone. Ms. Robinson committed to looking into some different ways that we can celebrate this and that we will follow up on it at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Wingfield. Any questions on the personnel? Yes, stop, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just to add, since that meeting, we did research and find, we found the actual date was approaching, so we posted on our social media recognition of the fifty-year anniversary of Title Nine.
Thank you. Board Member Valamani?
Just a supporting comment for the fiftieth anniversary of Title Nine. I think it would be very appropriate to celebrate that in some way, for a form. Thank you.
Yes, we're working on that. Feeling it would be most appropriate to do so when we launch school in the fall.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Board Member Wingfield. We'll now move on to the action portion of the meeting. And I'd like to make a motion to move the following. Resolutions four-three-one-eight, two-four-three-one-five, with the following exceptions. For four-three-one-three, we will be removing case number two-three-one-zero-four-five per the recommendation of our council. And also, as part of this motion, we're moving four-three-zero-eight to four-three-one-five with the exception of four-three-zero-eight-E, as in Ezra, four-three-zero-eight-I as in Igloo, and, oh, and that's it. Do I have any others? Four-three-one, four-three-zero-eight-J, and four-three-zero-eight-J. So let me just make that one more time. Not I, okay, let me, all right, I apologize. Hold on. Let's get it right. H I. Yep, you're correct. I'm sorry. So let's let us clarify that. Four-three-zero-eight to four-three-one-five with the exceptions of four-three-zero-eight-E and four-three-zero-eight-J. Now, the second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders, all in favor. That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Burnside, we're now in discussion for the the previously mentioned resolutions. Seeing no hands, close the discussion. Mr. Burnside, oh, sorry, Board Member Whitletter. Right, everything, yeah, we're at the everything else portion. Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Burnside, can you please call the roll on four-three-zero-eight through four-three-one-five with the exceptions of four-three-zero-eight-E as in Ezra and four-three-zero-eight-J as in Joshua?
And the four-three-one-three.
Do I need to do that as well? Okay, and four-three-one-three, case number two-three-one-zero-four-five.
Is removed. Thank you.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Telsford?
Yes.
Board Member Valamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes, with the exception of four-three-one-one-A-L, of which I'm abstaining due to an outside professional relationship with Equal Opportunity Schools.
Board Member Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move Resolutions four-three-zero-eight-E and four-three-zero-eight-J for discussion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders, all in favor. That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Burnside, we're now in discussion for Resolutions four-three-zero-eight-E and four-three-zero-eight-J. All right, seeing no discussion. Oh, Board Member Whitletter? Okay. Yes. Yes, go ahead, Board Member Whitletter.
So four-three-zero-eight-E. I'm one of two members on the committee that had asked that we table one of the line items in there for reasons being to have a proper discussion and review of a job description for a position that was approved in April twenty-twenty-one. The scope of that role has changed, and the job description was not revised accordingly to reflect that new scope of work. And in this particular case, we just want to make sure that we're being really intentional and prescriptive about who we're hiring for this role and what their work will be. And so I've asked, I asked to table it, but now I've asked to sever it for that very reason, and I don't think we followed the process and personnel to review this position as it has changed from the needs a year ago.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on Resolutions four-three-zero-eight-E and four-three-zero-eight-J? All right, seeing none, close the discussion. Mr. Burnside, we'll do these one at a time. Please call the roll on Resolution four-three-zero-eight-E.
Board Member Wright?
No.
Board Member Whitletter?
No.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Valamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telsford?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That was a no.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now please call the roll for four-three-zero-eight-J.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Telsford?
Yes.
Board Member Valamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Whitletter?
No.
Board Member Wright?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I do believe we have a hand-carry resolution. I believe we have two hand-carry resolutions. While the board members receive it, I'll begin reading. This is Resolution four-three-one-seven, and Ms. Butler, do need to read the subject, correct? Which is? Okay, four-three-one, so I'd like to read the record four-three-one-seven. Or I guess, make a motion for to discussion, right? That's the way to do it. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to discussion for Resolution four-three-one-seven, H I B Appeal Case Number two-two-nine-eight-seven-three underscore C E S underscore zero-three-one-six-two-zero-two-two. Whereas on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, an H I B here appeal hearing was held by a committee of the board in closed session involving a harassment intimidation bullying matter, H I B Report Number two-two-nine-eight-seven-three underscore C E S underscore zero-three-one-six-two-zero-two-two. Whereas at the hearing, the board heard from the anti-bullying specialist, the principal, and the parent who filed the appeal on behalf of their child. And whereas the committee carefully considered the relevant information, and whereas the committee has made a recommendation to the full board during the executive portion of its June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two board meeting, and the board has carefully considered the matter and the recommendation of the committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby affirms the determination that the institute did constitute H I B within the meaning of New Jersey statute and the board's policy on harassment, intimidation, bullying. That's the student number seven-five-nine-one-nine-seven-three-four-one-six. And be it further resolved that the administration take appropriate supportive, restorative, remedial, or punitive action, and be it further resolved that the board secretary is further directed to notify all of individuals affected by this decision of the board's determination. May I have a second? Wait, Ms. Butler?
Yes, excuse me, Board President Joshua, the third, I'm sorry, the second whereas clause?
Yes.
The sixth word should say committee rather than board.
Okay, uh, second?
Second whereas.
Whereas the board, okay. It says committee, we should say whereas the board. Got it. Correct, is it?
It should say committee.
Oh, it does, mine says committee.
And the second.
I apologize, I see it now. All right, so do I need to read this all again?
No, if you just correct what the second whereas clause.
Okay, so I'll just redo the second whereas. Whereas at the heating, at the hearing, the committee heard from the anti-bullying specialist, the principal, and the parent who filed the appeal on behalf of their child.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders, all in favor. That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Burnside, any discussion on Resolution four-three-one-seven? Seeing none, close the discussion. Mr. Burnside, please call the roll for Resolution four-three-one-seven.
Board Member Wright?
Yes.
Board Member Whitletter?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Valamani?
Yes.
Board Member Telsford?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I believe we have another hand-carry resolution for this evening. Thank you. Resolution four-three-one-eight Student Placement Appeal Hearing. Whereas on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, a student placement appeal hearing was held by the full board in closed session. And whereas at the hearing, the board heard from the parent guardian of students, student seven-six-eight-nine-one, the group one-five-three-five-three-seven, student nine-five-six-eight-five-four-six-three-four-two, and student pound sign six ampersand ampersand percentage sign dollar sign who filed an appeal on behalf of their child. And whereas the ball carefully, the board carefully considered the relevant information, and whereas the board has carefully considered the matter and the recommendation of the superintendent. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby affirms the determination of the superintendent. Be it further resolved that the board secretary is further directed to notify all individuals affected by this decision of the board's determination. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Siders, all in favor. That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Burnside, any discussion on Resolution four-three-one-eight? All right, seeing none, close the discussion. Mr. Burnside, please call the roll on Resolution four-three-one-eight.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board President Joshua?
Yes.
Board Member Siders?
Yes.
Board Member Telsford?
Yes.
Board Member Valamani?
Yes.
Board Member Wingfield?
Yes.
Board Member Whitletter?
No.
Board Member Wright?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. So we are now at the time for our second public speaks. Again, this is an opportunity for you to share your concerns about an item, but now time for dialogue with the board. The board requests that you state your name and town of residence for your record. We will set the time to three minutes for each speaker, and we ask that you respect that time limit. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we're giving anyone. We must cut you off so it does not appear as if we're giving anyone an advantage to share their views over another individual. Speakers have the full protection of free speech during public speaks. However, this form does not protect you from the subject of your free speech pursuing libel or slander charges. Finally, the board recommends that all members of our community pursue the chain of command. And our first public speaks is from Bill Powell.
Just want to say one other thing. I would just like for the, uh, board to investigate how many times the police department has been called for students who have threatened others or, uh, threatened to harm themselves. Could you just tell me the number of times the police department has been called? I know you can't give that to me tonight, but I would like you to investigate that and find out that.
Thank you. And that concludes our second public speaks. That's all, good response.
Thank you for, uh, for waiting and for your passion on this topic. I, I can't be a researcher for the public, but what I can do is direct you to the public records to answer that question between the police department and the school district. And I'm.
Sir, please be respectful with your language, this is a public meeting. Mister, Mister Powell, please be respectful of your language, this is a public meeting.
Sir, sir, I'm going to ask, this is not a time for dialogue. Superintendent has.
Mister Powell, please be respectful of your language, this is a public meeting. Thank you, sir. Sir, thank you for your.
Strictly tried for this kind of stuff from the board, for forty-six years, forty-six years. And your light one?
Thank you, Miss Powell, we appreciate it. Thank you, Mister Powell. Mister Powell, thank you very much, we do appreciate your time this evening. Thank you, Mister, thank you, Mister Powell. Thank you, Mister Powell. We're now moving on to new business. Do any board members have any new business this evening?
I have some new business.
All right, um. Board member Telesford?
Is it all right if I share my screen?
I don't know, you have talked to our tech guru, Mr. Bonds, who's giving us the thumbs up.
All right. All right. And can we see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
All right. All right, so I guess I'll just start off like, I kind of struggled with, I guess, where to present this. Because when we talk about the commons and the pool and the plan, um, I was told to save all my questions for the architects coming in July. And the big problem I had was none of my questions were really relevant to the architects. They really only relevant to us as a board. I kind of want to preface this as much of what I'm talking about here is about the decisions we make as a board. And it's not about what the district is presenting as the idea for the commons. Because a lot of that is about what we as a board have, I guess. I guess the responsibilities we placed on them, that they're quite difficult. And so I want to just keep that in mind. One of the words that's been bouncing around a lot has been the idea of the word legacy. And we heard that with, applied to Jefferson and everything. And that's something that I think is really important in this community because it's that idea of our predecessors handing us something and moving forward with a vision. And, um, when I think of that, I think of also as a C H S alumni, the fact that we have a hall of fame. And that's why I was really happy to see that this year we nominated people that had done something at Columbia and we brought them back because of something they did that is around the world now. Um, ultimate frisbee is going to be, um, it's, they will be considered for, as an Olympic sport in twenty twenty-eight. And so it made me think of my first hall of fame assembly. In my freshman year, the person that we honored was not an actor or famous person like a celebrity. It was a guidance counselor, Pete Cross. And one of the things I really remembered about that, that whole assembly was that every single morning, Mister Cross would go to the C H S pool, do some laps and go to work. And that really struck me because the C H S pool is actually the pool where I learned to swim. And I didn't learn at the community pool. Um, I didn't have friends that were rich that had pools, I couldn't swim in their pools. I learned in the C H S pool. That's why it was very painful for me to hear when people say that I'm too old to learn to swim. Because if we didn't have a pool there, then right now I wouldn't be able to swim. And so, but I don't think that's probably the most painful thing I've heard. I think the most painful thing is when I discuss this topic with board members and I'm very happy that we're actually being, being given tours now. It's very obvious that many of us board members have not actually been inside the high school. Um, let alone been students there. And I think when we're trying to, when we're going to make these decisions like whether to fill in the pool and turn it into a lounge or commons, whatever you want to call it. We have to remember that these are very important decisions. That's why I wanted to echo I fellow members, Witter, Espina and Wright, that when we have these very, very momentous decisions that are about the history of this, of this town, we're ha, we're talking about a, a pool that's almost a hundred years old. We can't just be so capricious and just say, leave it to the board. I myself may say, yes, opened up to the community, but I know that would be crazy. So it really is important that we as a board really look at the decisions we're making and really consider what we're doing. And so I guess I'll go back to in twenty thirteen, the board had a proposal. And their big proposal was about building a new naderatorium, basically a new pool. So they basically put down the current pool we had because they want to say the current pool we have is no good, so we need a new pool. Whatever happened, the naderatorium was too expensive. It was an eight million dollar project along with a five point nine million dollar project to fill the pool in, create new classroom space and expand the school. And whatever happened, that whole thing failed, but they decided to close the pool. And then they said that they were going to come up with a long-term solution for the swim team and for swimming and in the community. And whatever happened, that didn't happen. So I think we really need to think about the, the plan that we have before us. When we look at the commons, the way I look at it, it's a big giant lounge. For the most part, the section within the pool is a large staircase with very comfortable chairs. And the locker room space on the side is going to become our so-called guidance suite for classrooms. So.
Board member Telesford, I just want to interrupt you one second because you are on a roll and I appreciate it. I just want to let you know, according to Robert's rules, you do have ten minutes before someone else has to speak. So I just wanted to, and I, this is something, you know, I'm learning from prior, previous experience. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that now instead of me coming in at nine minutes and thirty seconds telling you to hurry up.
Can you have one minute then?
Sure.
Okay, um, yes, I will quickly, I guess, focus on, I guess, my presentation here. So we have these two choices here between the commons and the pool. And the way it was presented to us is based not just on the design, it was based on financials. Um, now I'm going to be sharing the actual financial that was shared from Chairman Vodlamani that was shared with the whole entire board, so this really should be public, be in the public here. And so what we saw was, we saw three point six million essentially versus eight million. And when we look at these two numbers, it's really easy to say, why would you choose the pool? It's twice the amount. And so what I decided to do was I said, let's look at these numbers more closely. The, in the actual presentation, they break it down into the, the square footage of the space well as the cost per square foot as well as the cost, uh, the total cost. And so this is what we have for the commons area. And then we look at the pool, we have the cost for the pool. Now, the first thing that kind of jumped out to me about the pool is that when we look at the commons area, we're only looking at about say three thousand square feet in terms of the alumni gallery and the guidance suite. And this is the area along the side, I'll go back to the slide over here. Along the slide, the side of the pool, this is going to be the area that is filled with our guidance suite and alumni hall. And it's in the same footprint as what we call as our pool lockers. Um, but when we look at the pool, when we look at the actual locker rooms, they're saying that sixty-five hundred square feet. So I kind of want to try to investigate why is that, what is the difference there? So the first thing I did was I looked at the commons and I added up all the square footage here. And what I found was it's actually closer to about nineteen hundred square feet within the commons area and about eleven hundred square feet in the alumni hall. But if you notice at the bottom here, it won't exactly be the full footprint of the locker room because we still have some residual locker room that's left over after we do some partial demolition of the girls locker room. So then I said, let me look at the actual pool. And so I went back to the actual regular session that we had back in June in two thousand thirteen. And I actually added up all the square footage of the area. The pool itself is only about thirty-five hundred square feet. And in terms of actual locker room space, um, when we add up all the boys locker room on the, on the boys locker room on the left side here and the girls locker room here, that's only about two thousand square feet. This is the part that would be slated for demolition. And then I just added in all the bathrooms and showers. I even added in this area for drying and also these two toilets just to kind of round it out to an, an even a thousand square feet. So in all the actual space that we're really using is closer to three thousand square feet as opposed to sixty-five hundred square feet. And I point this out because I said, if we're actually going to be looking at renovating, we would want to be renovating based on relevant space, not just looking at an entire footprint. But of course you can see, how do we actually get to sixty-five hundred square feet if we only have three thousand square feet in all? And I kind of did some calculations and I realized what they did was they just took this entire footprint of this L shape that surrounds the pool and then just said, this is sixty-five hundred square feet. And that's accurate. However, if we were actually to renovate this space or try to renovate some new locker rooms for the pool, so to speak, it wouldn't be sixty-five hundred square feet, it would be closer to three thousand. So if I actually altered the numbers just based on that and used these two thousand square feet, thousand square feet, three thousand square feet in all, then my numbers dropped from eight million to five point seven million. And you may say, okay, that's still too high. But it is far less than the eight million figure that some board members will say, that's a non-starter. And I would agree, eight million dollars is a non-starter, but I don't think that eight million dollars is very accurate in the first place. But the next thing that kind of jumped out to me is the fact that the square footage cost per square foot for the locker rooms is very high. Now, one thing that I was told in discussion about this was that the HVAC numbers are rolled into these locker room numbers. And if they're rolled into the locker room numbers, then why do we have a line item for the HVAC system with the cost per square footage? If it's already rolled into these numbers? To me, this is what makes this whole decision very difficult or whole process very odd because how can we make a decision where we compare these two things? If we, we don't have, I think, accurate numbers?
Hey, Mr. Burnside, one minute, one minute.
All right, so what I did was I looked at the original plan for the master plan and option one. It was one point two six million dollars and that's the same footprint. And what I found was when we look at that square footage, that's really two hundred dollars per square foot. And when we, when we factor in inflation, that's two hundred fifty dollars per square foot. The next thing I looked up, I said, let's, let me look online and look at commercial cost. And the range is three seventeen to three eighty-one, whereas HVAC costs for a pool, swimming pools is twenty-two to twenty-seven. So if we look back at our table, um, of the pool, these numbers are far higher than anything that we see there's with any, any commercially available things. But when we look at the commons, these square footages are pretty similar. So the next thing I looked at was I said, let me look at the HVAC costs. And when I look at the HVAC cost for anything that's being done in the high school in the long-range facilities plan, we also see that these numbers that we saw listed in our, online are pretty similar.
All right, um, that's a ten.
Okay.
All right, um, I'll go around for questions, I just want to say, you know, I, um, I think you know, just to wrap up, sort of bringing the whole meeting full circle, one of the things that board member Bergen brought up at the beginning of the meeting is that there's very few things that we can do. Um, and you know, I guess, you know, as the board designing, you know, building spaces way outside of our scope and our role is purely operational. Um, so I appreciate obviously lots of time went into this, but it's pretty far outside of our lane to, uh, while I recognize that we have to make a decision based on the information that we've been presented and we, we are right to question it. Uh, and, and ask with due diligence, which is why we're having our architects present us in July. Um, I just wanted to point that out, so. Any comments or questions on, uh, board members, board members Telesford? Board member Wingfield and Vodlamani?
Uh, Board Member, uh, Dr. Telesford, I really appreciate the information that you shared because I think the thing that's been frustrating for me is feeling really unclear about how we arrived at some of the numbers that have been shared with us. And I think the thing that I'm still very stuck on in arriving at the eight million dollars is the delineation between the actual pool cost of repairing the pool and the locker room costs, which have sort of been lumped into one piece. But I also, I guess, wonder that even if we got rid of the pool, at some point we're going to need to update and renovate these locker rooms, which I believe are fifty-plus years outdated. Uh, and it's got me thinking about, uh, the improvements that we're seeking to make in turfing, um, riser. And I imagine that that's going to lead to a big increase in sports teams utilizing those fields. And so it leaves me wondering if that's an investment that we're going to have to make anyway. Um, you know, these numbers come down even more dramatically. I, I think my concern has always been in what we're actually getting from the proposed, uh, the proposal right now in terms of this lounge space. Um, when you put those side by side, it's hard to, it's hard to feel good about destroying a pool when what we're getting, um, doesn't add, in my opinion, much to the instructional value of Columbia High School. And so I don't know, uh, Board President Joshua, I don't know what our options are at this point. Obviously I know that these are decisions, um, that were made prior to my arrival on the board. But I would like to, in addition to better understanding the nature of the pool and some of these different numbers, I also would like to better understand what is within our scope as a board.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Vodlamani and with letter?
So.
Board, uh, Board Member, uh, Telesford, can you stop sharing so I can see the whole, I can see everybody?
Right?
Thanks.
There you go. So this kind of goes back to the discussion we were.
So, this kind of goes back to the discussion we were having about renaming of Jefferson. Is that, at some point, everything cannot be a referendum and a five-year plan. We need to decide and move forward. So, I do understand the need to get more information. My point is, what is the process now? I mean, is that, are we going to wait another year to get all the information and then decide? Are we going to get it in the next two months? Are we going to get it in the next two weeks? So, that is my concern. I mean, again, I'm trying to be, I guess, efficient out here, for lack of a better word. Anyone, I'm happy to take answers from anyone, I mean, what is a process?
Before I go to Board Member, what letter, I guess I just, well, let me just go to Board Member, what letter first?
First, I just wanted to thank Dr. Tellerford for taking the time to put this presentation together. Obviously, you collected a lot of information and it was a lot of information that we hadn't had previously, so I just want to thank you for doing that work. And I think it just touches on a bigger issue that we've all had, and Board Member Winfield, you brought it up as well, is just not having the data that we need to proceed forward. I know I have requested, in addition to what the cost is of having a pool, right? What are the ongoing annual costs of maintaining a pool? Because, one of the things that we talked about, and I know I brought it up in a prior meeting, was this notion, which at the time seemed pretty promising, of getting rental income from other schools, because they would be able to come and use our pool for competitive purposes. To find out, after renovation, due to the shortening of the width and the depth, you know, it would only be for recreational use only, so we would still have to pay to rent another pool. All of these things are considerations, because it's not just, okay, we invest upfront, but what would be the ongoing maintenance? A lot of times, that maintenance occurs during the summertime, so the idea of using a pool sort of becomes obsolete in the summer as well. So, these are all things that, if we're actually going to have this conversation, I think we need to be operating on full and complete information. And then the second question, which is the same as a rune, is what is the process? You know, in terms of, if we were to make a change, do we go to the Board of Estimates? Like, I've never, I know this question came up months ago, but we haven't really identified what that process would be and how significantly it would push back the timeline of renovating CHS. Because, in those renovations, we know that there's really important safety and security updates. And so, I don't think we should pause a renovation that is necessary to improve that piece of quality of life for our students, something that is fundamental for all of our students.
Thank you, I'm just trying to take, take notes, Board Member Siders.
Thank you, Dr. Tellerford, for this report. Yeah, we, with everyone, a lot of hard work went into it. I'd like a better understanding of the vision for that space. I think what makes it a little hard for board members is when the community comes to you and they're pushing for one way or the other. And at least for me, I can't intelligently say what's going on in that space. So, I would like to at least have that conversation and hear what's coming. I think that would help a lot. And then, of course, the obvious is the process, you know, what, what can we do, what will we?
Alright, thanks. I think, so what I've heard are a couple of different things. Number one, just to reiterate, we're having a presentation in, at our July, get the date right, 18th Board Meeting, the architects are coming. I believe members from CHS Administration will be there as well to help answer both the facility piece, as well as the vision piece of this. And at that point, you know, we should, obviously, I've told many of us, all of us, that we've known for a while that the presentation is happening to get questions answered. We do know that, we've been told that there are updates to the report that we received, I think it was back in April. And so, we'll be getting updated numbers, updated information from that. I know they've done some additional work since, so that Mr. Burris, I could talk a little bit more about that more intelligently than I can. I know that the work has been done, I know that there are updates to be presented to us. And I think, you know, at a bare minimum, let's see what the updates are. There are some questions for them that we have sent over, and if there are more, please send them to me, let's get them correlated and send it to them by Friday, because I guess a lot of us are going to be not checking email this weekend. June's been very busy for all of us, I just want to say. So, just that opportunity, and still give them two full weeks to do any sort of research, investigation, if they need to do, before they come to us on the 18th, where I'm sure we will have a very, I guess, informative and probably rigorous discussion about the proposed plan for that space. So, I think that's the answer to the first question, what can we do now? I think that's what we can do now. And, what we would do after that, I don't think it's prudent to have that discussion until we know what we actually will be talking about after the 18th. Board Member Bergen.
Thank you. If there is an updated information from the architects, is that something that we can get as soon as possible before the meeting, so that our questions can be based on the updated information and we have time to digest it before the, before that meeting?
Yes, I guess this is two rounds. We have questions, we get it to them. As always, I ask for the presentations to be given in advance, so I anticipate us having it no later than that Thursday, which is back to the 14th. So, I think we'll, at a bare minimum, we'll have it, but no later than the 14th. And that gives us time to review, digest everything else that we have, and then ask more questions in advance if we, if we have them.
But if we know there already is updated information, can't we ask our questions based on the updated information?
Yeah, I just don't know if they're, if they finalized all, all I know is that they've done research. So, at this point, I'd have to ask Burriside and Dr. Taylor, how complete that, that is, and if they are ready with that. If it is, then yeah, we should probably get access to it, but I don't know if they're ready yet. I just know that they have been doing additional work since the prior presentation. Let me see, Dr. Burriside, before I?
Yeah, I would say that, let's do it both ways, right? Send the questions that you have, and the update that we send may also address it, but let's be proactive, and so board members could forward us any and all questions. And, when we give our next update, they'll be sure to be addressed and probably much more. And I think seeing the space in person, as a couple of folks did last week, also gives an interesting perspective as well.
Alright, Board Member Wright, I thought I saw your hand up, is that?
I, I, I was, I wanted to hear from Dr. Taylor, I figured he should be leading this work. I was wondering what his recommendations were, but he just spoke, thank you.
No problem, Board Member Tellerford.
I guess I just wanted to preface that I wasn't suggesting that I lead the construction. It's actually because, nonetheless, the, the presentations that we've had are not very clear. And then, my, the next comment I want to make was, a board member is, do we plan on actually fixing our lockers? Because, it seemed as though we had this plan of pool plus lockers, and I feel as though that's a separate discussion and probably should be considered separate. And when we talk about this plan of commons versus the pool, we should really just focus on those two items.
Thanks, Board Member Whitletter?
Just from our process perspective, I guess, what has been, I feel like we've been in a holding pattern for this issue for several months. And, look at, you know, we just are making a decision about renaming a school in less than a two-week period. And I'm just curious as to why this is dragging on, because we've known the board member concerns, we've known the request for data, we've known we wanted a tour, and it's been since March when we had the initial community presentation. And I'm just wondering why it's taking so long that we can't just make a decision and move forward, when we know we're capable of making really quick decisions?
I guess I would say that, my understanding is that these are the same architects who are doing the construction on all our buildings. So, this isn't their only role with us. They're working on the buildings that are under construction, helping to design the plans for the ones that are soon to be under construction. So, they've, they do have a lot on their plates, and that's my understanding. And so, it's not, let's say we're delaying it, I think we're just trying to work within our calendar. You know, we've been told that there is no plan to bid this space out before the fall. And so, we've had, you know, things that were, for instance, we've had, you know, South Mountain was, I think, in the, it was the spring, it was very cold that day, but I believe it was early in the spring. So, like, that took precedent over this, because that project is actually ongoing and underway. And we've heard lots of, we get our, these construction reports from the district every week, outlining where we are in distant areas, if there's been concerns that have been raised. You know, there was one with the Transformers that came up, and I know that. It was definitely taking a lot of time with our folks to figure out where placement would be and working with PSCNG on that, and I believe that's been solved. So, there are things that are actually ongoing, and I think that's why, you know, the things that haven't been are taken, they are sort of lower in the queue. But we recognize that as we, the calendar moves on, secondary schools, projects start coming up, the opportunity is now, in the next couple of months, to start doing those deep dives and reviews to figure out what, you know, what ultimately, what, what ultimately will the board be willing to approve on? So, that's, that's, that's what I would say. Board Member Valamani.
I just want to point out that there are serious costs associated with not deciding on time. There may not be explicit dollar costs, but there are costs in the society, there's costs in strife, there's costs and costs associated with disagreements. So, at some point, we need to bring all the information in and decide quickly. I mean, again, not hastily, but with deliberation and quickly. It doesn't matter if you have to work a little extra hard and spend more hours in getting it done, because there are costs. I mean, we may think it's free and can do this for the next two years, that's not true.
Thank you, Board Member Siders.
And, and I think the, the other reason why we are, it seems to be that we're now talking about this, is that when, when the community did come to us, they came to us in March, which is our busiest time, you know, the beginning of that busy cycle of March, April, May, June. It, you know, we're now to the point where we're discussing it, along with renaming Jefferson, at the end of June. And just that we, we have so much going on at this time of year. So, unfortunate, but how do you prioritize? We've got to get the budget done, we have to get our reorg done, or our, you know, looking at our employees for the next year. We, you know, these are things that we have to get done. Whereas, this discussion about the pool, yes, it's a little bit timely, but we have to do those other things first. We have bigger commitments, is the way I saw it. And the fact that we've met, what, five times this month, you know, it's, yeah.
Dr. Taylor.
Yeah, I would also just share the perspective that we are reviewing a past decision, right? And considering, the board is considering whatever the board is considering regarding those past decisions. So, this is not an initial launch. The decisions and the perspective and the planning was already decided upon and moved forward. So, we're not behind in that. What we're doing now, the board is reconsidering, and we're maneuvering to offer as much as we can for that reconsideration. Just wanted to make sure, just for the perspective's sake, that the preparation for this space has been finalized and moved forward, and previous boards and all the things that have been talked about, and now we're reconsidering. So, that's just in that, just to kind of lay a clear, a clear line of where we are, and now preparing for the board, as we always do, to do whatever the board's will is.
Board Member Tellerford.
I just wanted to get some clarity on what do we mean by reconsideration? Or, does that mean that we're only considering how we're filling in the pool? Or, if we are possibly changing the plan at all? So, I just wanted to understand, when we talk about consideration or questions about what our choices are, what are our actual choices here, what can we do?
So, to me, that's a conversation that we would want to have in July, and perhaps even inviting our bond counsel to give just real specifics on the, the kind of the nuts and the bolts on that. Because, you are the board, right? You're this, you're, you're a vote of five, your five votes leads us when it comes to spending money. But, things were put in place, we talked about the Board of School Estimate and the planning and their approvals. There's probably a, you know, a lot of who, what, and where when it comes to the real specifics of if the board decided to do X, or if the board decided to continue the path that they're doing now without any action. You know, what's the difference in that cycle? What's the difference in the spending? What's the difference in, as Board VP Whitletter said, the difference in the timing, right? And, you know, not wanting to delay such a needed project for this conversation, or that this conversation is so important that we want to delay. So, there's a lot to consider, but we, we want you to be informed around all the consequences unintended, in other words, otherwise, I'm sorry, when it comes to this.
Board Member Wright.
Thank you, I wanted to ask Chairman Valamani, he, you went on the tour of the pool. What, what did you think about it? And I have a question for you, President Joshua.
I, I shared my views with, you know, board members who were there, and I'm happy to share with you when we meet in the exec session. I don't think I'm ready to share that with public, because we, as a board, need to come to a consensus before we talk to everyone else. When I saw the pool, I was actually very impressed with the high school, I loved it. It was great to see where my kid goes to school. You know, I saw the east gym and the west gym and the wood, the woodmaking place. I mean, that was like fantastic where they make things. So, I mean, my opinion really does not matter here. What matters is we, as a board, need to decide whether we're going to do it or not. And, and this opportunity is going to be available for the entire board in the next two weeks. So, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you in a, in a position. I thought that since we were discussing and you had seen it, maybe you could share your thoughts. But, President Joshua, I'm, I'm really confused, because you said that you couldn't be any clearer that we were not moving forward with the pool, and now we're back. And I, I think everybody knows how hard I've worked to try and save the pool. However, decisions, you know, were made, and I think you made it very clear for me. And, and now I'm just sort of confused about where we are going and why. I really appreciate what you put together. That was a lot of work, and a lot of time, especially with your new baby. I, I appreciate all of it.
I'll just say, actually, it wasn't that much work to dig up some of the numbers. It just, you look at the numbers and they kind of jumped out at me, saying, this kind of doesn't make much sense. So, I just did a little digging, five-minute search, I said, okay, that looks, I can compare these numbers now.
See, you guys, and this technology, I tell you, a five-minute search, going back to 2013. But I, I tell you, I'm, I'm befuddled right now, I, you know, I'm headed in completely opposite direction.
I mean, as I said, you know, we just heard from the district that there is plans for the space to be a commons, right? And we're being presented that plan at our July meeting. So, I don't, I can't be any clearer, that's what we're being presented. Now, what people are saying, I guess your question is really, is there, is the board going to even contemplate going back and reconsidering that decision? I don't know. My understanding from everything I've heard is that, you know, the district has worked hard on this plan within parameters given, and this was the option that they came up with. One of the main questions that I think a lot of us have is what happened to the original plan. The original plan, for those who remember, called for that space to be turned into three classrooms. And, a lot of us are wondering, why was that decision changed? So, I think that's the biggest question we have. And, well, once that question is answered, we can, in addition to some of the other questions that I'm sure everyone else has, that's probably the main one. You know, this was supposed to be three classrooms, and now it's going to be- You know, this was supposed to be three classrooms, and now it's going to be your student comments, community space, not community space, our student comments area. So where are the three classrooms going? Um, you know, I, I definitely would want that question answered by um our July 18th meeting. So that's all I can say. Like, I recognize that, you know, the plan changed and the, the change of the plan is what probably garnered a lot of these additional questions. And we hope to get them answered on the 18th.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'm gonna wrap that one up. I know Board Member Whitletter had some new business um as well. Go ahead.
Well, first, I just want to give credit where credits do. Um thank you so much to our local public health official Candace Davenport, um community members Rachel Fisher and Heather Sloboski and Dr. Taylor for um creating the gun safety form and making it available in the digital backpack. Um obviously, it's something that's really important, and I'm just grateful you all prioritize that. So thank you. Um my new business today, I wanted to focus on our bylaw 0174, which defines our legal services and procedures. Um so there are times when board members need to have access to our board attorney to discuss critical matters. In my opinion, this is a crucial part of establishing appropriate checks and balances and just keeping our democratic process intact. So I wanted to strategize with all of you, um ways that we could structure attorney access for all while keeping our legal fees down. Um and I'll just start there. I have other sort of comments to add, but I just wanted to see if we could open the floor to, to have a conversation about that.
Board Member Valamani.
So, I mean, I have spent some time thinking about this in the sense that it would be nice to have access, but I do also understand that it can be very expensive. So maybe a practical solution is to have a quota of, I don't know, an hour, every six months, or two hours a year per board member of unobstructed access. So what that would mean is in, in total, we only have about 18 hours of extra time for the, for the attorney. But at that point, each board member is feeling absolutely free to ask whatever questions and get whatever responses they want. That is one solution. I mean, I understand the, the costs, but I also understand the need to talk directly with the attorney as opposed to, you know, going through other places.
Thank you. Um generally speaking, you know, I'm looking at the policy. It says, "Board member legal questions in an effort to be prudent and efficient with public money, board member legal questions shall be directed to the board president." Um on most every occasion, you know, a board member question comes to me, I send it to the attorney. You know, it's always happened when, one, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, to try to save public funds. Or I don't think it's uh the appropriate, that the board attorney isn't the appropriate person to ask, is probably if it's someone else within the district. Um or for instance, uh, one thing I have um is when a question is not perceived to be like the, is it the board's question or is it a question, right? So that's one of these things where um I have to use a little bit of um judgment, but generally speaking, almost all questions, they just go, um, like I said, if I know the answer, I don't send it because I know the answer, or if I know the administration knows the answer, I go there. The one, um, just to comment on Board Member Valamani's point, I think it sounds good, but I think you're looking at the front side of it, which is it takes you two hours. We're not looking at the backside, which is how long does it take to research the answer? So if your one question, it takes you five minutes, but if it takes the attorney two hours, those are your two hours. So I just want everyone to think about this idea of having, you know, like this, it's like a bank, if you will, a bank of hours and how um, and just to be thoughtful, because I think sometimes there are questions that was, was, we do things as a check, but I like to do things as a check when our attorney is here, because we're already paying. Right? I don't want to go and get a question answered, you know, on a Friday when I know we're going to see her Monday, when we can ask a question, but I believe it's simple enough to be automatically answered. And if it needs to be researched, um now for something that affects what we're voting on, we obviously get that because we need that answer before we show up here or there on screen to make that decision. Um and we do that every month, whether it's HIV or other um, other things that we know might require a legal opinion in advance. So uh I, I, I just, you know, as we move on through the rest of the year, um we can have a discussion, I think, if there's anything, obviously with a policy, we'd have to go through the policy committee uh to revise it accordingly. So we're at a minimum two months before any change happens, but discussion can happen there. That's probably the best place for it to start and for others to chime in. Speaking of, Policy Chair Berger.
Thank you. Um I was gonna say I um, I pulled up the Strohs as my policy on this, and I can um send everyone a PDF so that they can compare. But one thing that I noticed, it says is "School districts with legal costs that exceed 130% of the statewide average per student amount should establish certain procedures below." Um and if not established, provide evidence of such, uh evidence such procedures would not result in a reduction in costs. So I'm not sure if there's um a legal obligation to figure out where we, you know, where we fall in our legal costs. And if we are at the high end, it looks like the, the boilerplate policy has certain checks that have to be put into place. I'm not sure if that's a legal requirement or not, but I think that's something that would need to be researched before we took any um action on the policy.
Yeah. Dr. Taylor's gonna respond.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. I was wondering if the accountability regulations reflect any guidance on that? Because um it does on so many other things. Like, I can't even buy, you know, lunch for staff members because of the accountability regs. So I wonder if there's some information in there that links to that policy that you just stated in the 130%. So we can do that research for the board as well.
Thank you. One thing I just want to point out is that uh we did get legal costs, at least finance did. I don't remember when it was, if it was late last year or early this year. I know our costs have gone down 40% in the past couple of years. And I do know when I joined the board, I think we were either right at or close to that 130. Um and we're definitely way below that threshold now. So I do want to commend the district and our attorneys for working more efficiently um to keep us within that threshold or way under it. I just wanted to add that, because I know that, I don't know if everyone was aware of that, but I do know that those numbers have been shared. Um, all right, I saw a whole bunch of hands. I'm gonna go to Board Member Siders, and then Board Member Wright, and then Board Member Whitletter.
Um I'm in support of board members' legal questions going directly to the board president. That's how it was presented to me when I first joined the board. And not, not only is it being prudent and efficient with public money, it's also helping to decide where legal counsel is going to be working. We don't want to get into a, a situation where you have multiple people asking legal counsel advice on a variety of things. That's, how, how do you figure out what legal counsel is supposed to be focusing on if that occurs? And I, I think though, that was part of the reason why questions go through the board president, to kind of collate those questions and be able to, you know, help, help legal counsel prioritize.
Thank you. Board Member Wright.
Yes, you know, I believe uh that the administration should make a set of recommendations for the board's consideration uh with regards to um um access to legal. And we always have the New Jersey School Boards Association uh legal team uh to answer questions for us. But as a board member, I feel that I ought to have access to legal whenever I need it. You know, we're all sitting members with the same amount of uh power, if you will. Uh and we all have different issues. And sometimes, you know, I, you know, I don't need to hear anything secondhand. I'd like to hear it firsthand. And uh our legal expenses are, are down because a lot of our lawsuits are down. Uh I can remember a time when we didn't have an attorney for the district. And so it is important that everybody has access to legal. That's why they're the board attorney. It's not the board, executive board's attorney, it is the board's attorney.
Thank you. Board Member Whitletter.
Um, so just a couple of things. So in the bylaw, which I know was approved in December of 2020, um it does give the board president um sort of the direction that any legal questions are funneled through the board president. Um but the bylaw does not solicit or, or state that the board president has the authorization to approve or deny those requests. And I think it's really important that we put a mechanism, mechanism in place that, again, affords board members the opportunity to speak to our board attorney. Um, you know, just as a proper system of checks and balances. And I really liked Arun's idea. I know he threw out the two hour example, but it was just, you know, an example. And so if we actually did some digging and tried to figure out what that number actually looks like, um, you know, I think that could solve a lot of um challenges that our board is currently facing. And um I know that in some boards I spoke to, they actually have a process whereby the board president and the vice president are both involved in um in vetting some of these requests or having the requests go to them. So I understand we want to keep costs down. That's a huge priority for the district, but um we also need to make sure that as board members, that we have someone to speak to to ensure that we're implementing appropriate and effective governance as well.
Board Member Valamani, thank you for that, by the way. Board Member Whitletter. Board Member Valamani.
So, I mean, I just want to clarify that this is not in any way a reflection of the current board president, okay? I mean, I'm okay with the process we have right now. This, this is not a, you know, a complaint session saying, oh, I'm not getting through my access, but in theory, I mean, it would be ni- like, for example, I mean, it would be nice to have an independent access, however limited it is. Again, I'm not advocating for unfettered, open-ended access, right? But it would be nice to have maybe even a question a day. I mean, again, you're right, that, you know, we don't know what the backend process is. It could be a, a five minute question and a 10 day work behind it. But I mean, I'm sure that can be negotiated in the sense that that can be a dialogue between the board member and the board uh attorney saying, oh, that's going to take me five days. And I'm like, okay, sorry, I, I didn't, no, I didn't mean, know it was going to take five days. So it's, it's just a, it's a way of making sure that everyone actually feels independent and not having access controlled.
Thank you. Board Member Wakefield.
I guess some of my concern as I'm listening to different reactions is an unintended consequence that if we all had independent access to the board attorney anytime we wanted to ask a question, that we would be operating without necessarily a shared set of knowledge to make decisions. I think one of the things that is intentional and effective about having questions funneled through the board president is that um it increases the likelihood, from my perspective, of coherence in terms of the type of information that we're operating from. Um and I would certainly be concerning if um Board Member Valamani had sort of uh his own conversation. I had my own conversation, and then we show up to vote, or we show up to executive session, and we've all had these independent siloed conversations with the board attorney um that don't necessarily provide a, a coherent um set of knowledge for us to be able to act on. I know for me, having access to be able to ask direct questions of our board attorney in exec session has definitely helped me to be able to provide clarity where um I may need some additional information or may need to better understand a decision um that I'm being asked to make. But I think all of us having independent um access could produce um uh a disjointedness that I don't think would help us to be able to effectively operate as a, as a unit of nine.
Dr. Wait, Miss Board, Board Member Wright, is that an old and new hand before I go to Dr. Taylor?
Okay, I, it's an old hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. While you were gone, Dr. Taylor, Board Member Wright did ask um for um the district to make recommendations for the board as to how we can access legal. So I know you had stepped away. I just wanted to bring that to you.
Sure. Um and I, I, I've been listening um attentively. Um you're all getting me in trouble. It's my wedding anniversary today. So I had to just go and make that quick call.
Get him home by midnight.
No, no, it's fine. I made a quick call. We're fine. Um I, um, so previously, the best practices that I've observed is what the board is currently doing now. I think that context is so important when you're dealing with legal advice and making sure that when you give the advice, when you give the question, that the question is clearly understood by the person receiving it. And I think that with having that full vetting, and you may notice sometimes when you ask me a question, I'll send my answer to the full board, right, with the question that you asked, just so that everyone's operating from the same information. Everyone um understands how the question was formed, because sometimes just a couple of words here and there can make a huge difference when um understanding what the intent of the response would be. Um and so for me, um Board Member Wright, my recommendation would be to continue as the board is, has been with the board president, working uh to give information, uh questions to the legal counsel. I think it, it controls costs. It also controls um that it ensures that everyone receives the same information and um it avoids, I think, unnecessary silos um and mis- misinterpretations. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? Board Member Whitletter.
So one thing, just to add on to that before I just bring up another, another topic, which shouldn't take long, and happy anniversary. Is, you know, you know, we talk about unintended consequences, and as board members, it is really difficult when, you know, just because something's been done a certain way, doesn't necessarily mean it's the proper way. You know, there's, and I'm not, this isn't an attack on anyone, I'm just saying, in terms of governance, like there, there could be ways that people have done things. And, you know, we go to our NJSPA training and we learn about new ways. And oftentimes, when we bring those new ideas to the table, it feels like there's a lot of pushback. And as part of our role as board members, it's our fiduciary responsibility to really be informed. And, you know, are we doing things appropriately? Are we not? If we're learning that some things, there's a certain way to do things, and we're doing things differently, is that the way we should be doing things? And so I feel like having this opportunity to, you know, in my case, and I know people aren't approving of this, but I, I do call the NJSPA board attorney because, you know, it's, there's a lot of gray area in serving in government, as we all know. So we need to make sure as board members, we understand what our role is, what we can do and what we can't do. And when we don't have access to our board attorney, it makes our jobs increasingly more difficult. And I do think that it's created a divide. I mean, we just approved, you know, a resolution tonight to pay for board member attorney fees because of the infighting that's been going on and, and the litigation that's been occurring. So, you know, could some of those issues been, how, could they have been managed in-house if people had the opportunity to actually speak with board attorney and get legal advice and, and work together? Um rather than feeling like, you know, we can't get the information from our board colleagues or from our board attorney, so it constantly feels like this push and pull. And as, you know, someone new to governance, it's, you know, who am I learning from? And am I learning the right ways of doing things?
I think that um there's, that's a thoughtful, thoughtful question, right? And so I didn't hear anyone say that they're not able to get the advice or the response from the board's attorney. or the response from the board's attorney, working through the board president, at least in my experience, right? I'm speaking from just my experience. But I do think also, my concern would be that if board members were having a disagreement and both board members are sharing with the board's attorney their perspective of the disagreement. And I've been through this, you know, with others, with managing other folks, right? Is they share their concern with the twist that makes their argument work for them sometimes, sometimes. And so you both could be right based on how you ask your question. And so I think going through the third party helps it to be just a very clear response, in my experience. I'm not saying it's the only way to do it. But if, if as for, you know, the best practices that I have recognized and seen in other places, it would be what we're doing now. But again, there's always, you know, other things to consider.
Thank you, Board Member Wakefield, and then Board Member Valamani.
I definitely hear what you're saying. And I agree with a lot of what you're bringing up in terms of just thinking about ways to innovate. I do want to take issue with one thing that you said. And I want just to ask us to be careful not to conflate concerns with our litigation costs and overgeneralize them with sort of a broader board action as opposed to the action of a couple of our board colleagues who have chosen to pursue litigation as opposed to direct communication and conflict solving.
Thank you, Board Member Valamani.
So I do agree that sending a huge chunk, you know, maybe even 99.5, 95% of all queries through the president makes sense. It's efficient, I, I buy that. But there is always going to be one question a year that requires me to feel that I have access to an attorney who can give me some advice. It need not be about anything. It could be something about, I don't know, I tripped and fell while walking into public speaks. What happens now? I mean, it need not have to do with anything else. So I think what, at least a portion of what Board Member Whitletter is pointing to and what I kind of agree with is that we can limit it to a smaller amount. But there needs to be at least one point, at some point, I should be able to go freely and talk with the attorney. Yes, I agree, we could put limitations, front end, back end, you know, five hours, two hours, whatever it is. But to be prudent, I mean, maybe one question in six months, I don't care. But there, there has to be a way where I should be able to send an, like, like, you know, it's happened to me, right? No, I send an email and it gets sent to the board president, which is, again, I said, 99.99% of the times, it's great. Not, not a problem at all. But maybe, I'm looking at the 0.001%, a one in a thousand case where I truly have a problem and I have no way to go to. Then would you rather me go to the board, board attorney or go to the NJSPA attorney, who I don't even know? I mean, I would rather just go here. I mean, I, I know, I know the person and I trust the person.
Thank you, Board Member Bergen.
Oh, I, maybe Board Member Valamani just answered my question. But I, I don't understand why the NJSPA attorney option isn't filling this need. And yeah, how legal fees can get really expensive really quickly. And I think I would just really caution making any change. I would also like to hear what our counsel thinks about it, what Ms. Butler thinks about this issue and, and our new counsel in terms of, you know, getting asked a million different questions and getting pulled in different directions when they may not be the focus of what the board as a whole has decided, you know, the priority should be.
I can say I've been doing this over 30 years. And the most consistent practice that I have experienced is that it is the board president who contacts counsel. Because it can, primarily it's a cost issue. And years ago, school districts, you know, made it very easy for everybody, you know, to reach out to counsel. And then they realized how expensive that was becoming. So they started paring back down. And but even during that time where I may get calls from, from staff members, I wasn't getting calls from individual board members. The questions historically have been filtered through either the board president or the superintendent. And it is a cost issue. And in those instances where a board member may feel they need to speak with me about a particular issue and it may be an issue where the board member may not want to go through the board president, what I have said, you know, based on every, the board's policy would be, okay, I need you to notify the board president that you are going to be reaching out to me. Because I'm not supposed to be having communications with every possible board member. It is supposed to come through the board president. So the board president need not be part of the communication, but at least needs to be aware that there is this communication and says, okay, reach out to the board attorney. That's been my experience. Can't say what new counsel is going to say about it.
Board Member Whitletter.
I was just gonna say, that's very helpful to know because that's new information to me. I mean, I did ask to speak to legal counsel once and that request was denied and that's fine. But I didn't realize that I could actually reach out to you directly and, and then just let the board president know.
It would be, it would not be, you know, reach out to me, I'm going to chat with you and give you advice. If, I would say to you right away, you need to reach out to the board president. So the board president knows that you are contacting me. And see what the board, and the board president would say yes. But I can't, it, it's not a choice that I can make based on the, the parameters of my representation and based on a board policy. I cannot go beyond that.
Well, and it's when you call NJSPA, the, the message for the board attorney is, this is not, this isn't supposed to be a second opinion. You're supposed to go to your board attorney. Like they have this whole template message. And so, you know, I hear that and I'm like, we don't have access to our board attorney. So what?
But you do have access to your board attorney through the board president. And if it were something that you felt you could not speak to the board president about, you'd have to say, it's something I need to speak to the attorney about and I don't feel comfortable speaking
Yes.
with you about it. But as the board attorney who is subject to what the bylaw says, I can't have communication with you. It's got to be filtered through. And that, that's how it is, you know, with all of my districts. I don't speak to board members. I speak to board presidents, I speak to superintendents. I don't speak to individual board members.
Ms. Butler, let me ask a follow-up question to that. If there's a situation where, as you just stated, there is a, a board member wants to ask a question and for whatever reason, they don't feel comfortable going to the board president, should they, could we then amend our policy to say in this, this rare case, they go to the board vice president?
Wait, I, I'm sorry.
To the board vice president. So if this is a case where I have to ask a board member attorney a question, but I'm not comfortable going to the board president? Is there enough? Because then I can just imagine that being, well, I'm not comfortable going to the board president. And then people just go right along. So is there a way to put like a check about, a check in place where it's, in those cases, I then go to the board? In our case, we have two, so first vice president in order to provide that same check to the president?
If, if that's, if that's within the bylaw, you can do that. It, it, the, my role as a board attorney is governed by my agreement with the Board of Education, the terms of my agreement, and then the bylaw. And I believe specifically in the terms of my agreement, it says that it's board president. It doesn't say that it would be communications with the individual board members.
Thank you, Board Member Wright, and then Board Member Valamani, and then Board Member Bergen.
Want to put my hand down first? We could go on about this forever. The bottom line is that I believe that every member sitting on this board should have access to the board's attorney. And there may be some things that maybe you don't want to share with other board members that you need personal answers for. And since we do have a board attorney, everyone should have access. And, and that, that comes along with just a little bit of trust. Trust that whatever, you know, the board attorney is gonna say to you is something that you need a, a response or an answer to. New Jersey School Board's attorneys always don't understand the nuances of what's happening in different school boards across the state, including ours. But we all should have access to the attorney if we feel that need. I don't think everybody's running to attorneys. I can ask Ms. Butler, how many times have board members come to you for, for a question? Over the years, as you say, things are adding up. I don't, I don't remember coming. If I did, I would want that, I would want that to have that access, that, that, that available to me to ask a legal question. And we should. That's how you do your due diligence, your duty of care and your fiduciary responsibility to the community.
I just keep hearing, thank you for that, Board Member Wright. I just keep hearing people say they don't have access when in fact, it's what I'm really hearing is they don't have direct access. And that's because that's what's outlined in the policy. What I do hear from Board Member Wakefield is that everyone does have access during executive session, which we have at least once a month for at least an hour. And while that's not necessarily a be all end all, it is an opportunity to ask our board attorney about questions on agenda items that are either coming up for an immediate vote or a future vote. So, and if there are questions that come up in committee, we, sometimes the answer is, we should get a legal opinion on that. Whether it's the chair or the administration, they usually work with our board attorney. Again, through the superintendent or his designees to get those answers. So I just wanted to reiterate that and sort of clarify this idea that when people are talking about access, I think they're really talking about direct access.
Thank you, thank you, Thayer. Thank you. And, and Ms. Butler did say that she doesn't talk to board members.
It's not within the scope of my service. With, and I will explain to a board member if I get an inquiry, whether it's by email or by phone, that I'm not supposed to be communicating with you directly. It needs to go through the board president.
I don't remember who I said was next, so whoever I said was next, please go, thanks. Board Member Valamani, okay, then Board Member Bergen.
So, again, I mean, I, yes, we have access in, in aggregate. We do not have personal access. And that's, I think, what we have found. I think, I, I think you broke it down correctly is that we have access during exec sessions, we have access through the board president, but never do we have direct access. And I believe, you know, to be truly independent and to truly get real answers, sometimes you need that. And I'm okay with limiting it. I mean, I, I, I don't see any strife in me going personally and asking to clarify something. It could be just for me. And then I don't think money is necessarily the problem. You spend millions of dollars of the whole school system. Spending 20 hours more is not gonna kill anyone. In fact, I only think it'll, it'll make the board work better because at that point, people have more trust. Because I will hear from the board attorney what maybe somebody else would have told me. So again, I think it may make sense to kind of float a, a pilot program where everyone gets one hour of backend, not frontend, I understand that, of one hour of attorney time, you know, over the whole year. And let's see how that works. Maybe that'll solve the problem. And 20 hours is nothing. I mean, whatever, nine hours of, I'm sorry, nine, nine board members, nine hours is nothing. That's just not money at all. So that's a problem. I think, I think you kind of broke it down correctly is that, yes, we have access. In the exec sessions, we ask questions. Yes, we ask questions otherwise. But I can foresee a time when I have a question that only I want to hear the answer to, nobody else. And I have no way to turn for that.
Thank you, Board Member Bergen, and then Board Member Wright.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, the board counsel is counsel to the board as a whole, not counsel to individual board members. And it makes sense to me that individual board members would not have direct access whenever they want to the board attorney. I also just wanted to say that if we were to ever consider putting something in the policy about being able to go around the board president, if someone is uncomfortable going through the board president, that I, I would not support doing that with that word uncomfortable. And if we ever were to do that, it would have to be in certain enumerated circumstances spelled out, not just left up to the comfort of someone on the board in dealing with another board member. Like documented legal conflict or something like that.
Board Member Wright, I showed us old and new.
Okay, according to the New Jersey School Boards Association, the board attorney is exactly that, the attorney to the Board of Education. Essentially, the attorney's client is not you, the board member, nor is it the administration. The client is actually the Board of Education. So that means all of us. And, and we should all be represented by our board counsel or solicitor, as we say sometimes.
That's no different than when we go through the media. There is a, yes, when the board president speaks on behalf of the Board of Education, that's one of those things that are enumerated in the responsibility of the board president. By no means do I think that the board attorney is my attorney. The board attorney is the board's attorney. The board president is a representative for the board in numerous different areas, not just in respect to legal counsel. So when the board attorney, when the board president is asking a question, the board president is asking a question on behalf of the Board of Education as the client to the board's attorney as our solicitor. Board Member Valamani.
So, so maybe I'm not clear about this, you know, how this works is that, is it possible for a board member to do something illegal while being on the board? And if that is true, and if I don't have representation, should I be getting my own lawyer?
Unfortunately, the answer is yes, right? Now, it depends on what you're talking about. If you do this, and I should let Ms. Butler expand, but my understanding is if you, if you are accused of doing something in the confines of being a board member, then we, you have to get the policy number. But there is indemnification that applies. And then the board, therefore the taxpayers, are responsible for legal services up until a certain point. If it is something you do on your own as a private citizen, then it is you on your own who's responsible for obtaining legal counsel. Did I explain that accurately, Ms. Butler?
I'm too short, I have to keep getting up to turn it on. There's a statute that addresses that issue. And it, but it is set forth in the bylaws as well.
Correct, so, so, so the corollary is that if I feel that something I do is potentially illegal or unethical or whatever it is, I should have access to the board attorney to clarify that. That's all there is. This is not, we're not talking about, you know, I don't know, breaking, I, I don't know what, where people are coming from. I'm asking for a very simple question. If I think something is wrong, who should I clarify that with? Clearly not the board president, because he's not a lawyer, he's not a lawyer. Or, I mean, yes, he can answer all my questions based on experience, but not from a authoritative legal perspective. So that's all I'm trying to find out is that there may be, I mean, maybe I'm overthinking this and maybe it's a theoretical discussion, right? But I can easily foresee a scenario where I have a question and I need an answer and I need a private, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a legal answer. And the answer can only come from a lawyer. And if the board lawyer, or the board attorney is not my lawyer, then who's my lawyer? Should I hire my own lawyer?
That's probably NJSPA, I would think. Because if you're asking the question specifically about, am I doing something that might be considered unethical? Then, and you don't want to filter that through the channels established in this policy, NJSPA could, while it's not, again, your official thing, they are well aware about the code of ethics and things that could be construed as possible violations. So I wouldn't, again, that, and again, that's, that comes with our dues. So I'm not gonna necessarily say it's free, but it's included in our membership with NJSPA.
I mean, then does it not make sense to go to the board attorney who knows you? As opposed to going to some random person who's sitting, I don't even know where. It's easy. It's, this is like a simple nine into whatever dollars per hour business, right? I mean,
Right. So I guess I would then say, in this scenario, right? It's a, if this, right? If I did ask, would that, would that be considered a potential violation, right? And I don't think, you know, and it's a if, right? So if, if someone does it, and if I, it might be worth, you know, we do these trainings, where we get these ethics trainings at least once a year. So it could be one of those scenarios where we get in the whole, you know, you ask a question, if this goes into the attorney, attorney answers, it's shared with the whole board as a hypothetical. Someone who might potentially do this runs the risk or maybe not, depending on the answer of committing ethics violations, right? We've had, you know, we've had, the attorney has shared various memos with us during my time on the board with respect to communications, actions, et cetera, and what folks should be mindful of, which again, goes into the training that we receive annually about things to be mindful of when conducting ourselves as board members, not just here, but when we leave. Board member Whitler?
I was just gonna go back to the point of the bylaws, zero one seven four. You know, in an effort to be prudent, efficient with public money, all of our legal questions get directed to the board president. And I just want to go on record, I'm not opposed to that process. But it does not, this bylaw does not give the board president authority to deny or approve those requests. And I think we need to figure out how, as a board, when we need an opinion and, you know, not using the word uncomfortable or comfortable, but, you know, maybe in this case, it's that system of checks and balances and members of this board could be involved in that. And so we want to be able to have a confidential conversation with our board attorney. We should be able to do that. And that's what I wanted to discuss here. I really like Arun's idea and I would like for us to continue to have this conversation because I know Dr. Taylor wants to get home for his anniversary. Oh, happy anniversary, but, oh my gosh, all right, we've got triple anniversaries. But I do think this is really important. And I do think despite what others might feel about it, I do think it would be helpful to our board dynamic and feeling as a board member that you have, if needed, and it's, we would have to have it structured. That's it. It'd have to be structured so that there isn't overrun and we see these costs go up. We can do this and be creative about it. And, you know, that's just what I was hoping to discuss tonight.
Board member Valamani.
So I mean, clearly, I mean, this is not where we are gonna be deciding this. I mean, we've talked enough about this, we've gotten, and nothing's gonna happen without the entire board agreeing. So, so I'm gonna probably spend the next few months trying to convince you that this is a good idea, till you can convince me it's, mine is a bad idea, and we'll move forward. But, but there is, there are real concerns that at least I have and obviously, board member Whitler has, and we should talk it out and then see if it works out.
Please do, Dr. Taylor.
So you have a retreat coming up, two of them, right? And you're gonna have NJ SBA here. So it may be a good chance to get their feedback on that. And what, what are the positives and negatives that they've seen from their perspective, perhaps?
Any other new business this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'd like to make the following motions. The Board of Education will meet in a special public session Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at six thirty PM in District, oops, using a online video conference platform, which will include the hearings of individuals and delegates. Immediately following publication, the Board of Education will move into executive session using an online video conference platform to discuss chief school administrators' evaluation. Action may be taken. The Board of Education will meet in closed session Monday, July eighteenth at six thirty PM in Superintendent's Office, five twenty-five, Catter Street in Maplewood, as well as using an online video conference platform to discuss personnel, legal issues, negotiations, and other matters to be announced at a later date. Immediately following the closed session, the Board of Education will be in public session in District Meeting Room five twenty-five, Catter Street in Maplewood, as well as using an online video conference platform, which will include series of individuals and delegates. Action will be taken. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board members. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm Mr. Burnside. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting on Monday, June twenty-seventh at eleven twenty-six PM. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Wakefield. All in favor? Happy anniversary to those who're celebrating. We'll see you all Wednesday. Have a wonderful evening and stay safe.